Special meeting of the Bethel Board of Finance, today Wednesday, April 25th, and we'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just before we get started tonight, I just want to touch on one thing. Tonight has the potential for being a long night, which is why I stopped, got a little coffee before the meeting. In an attempt to try to keep things on schedule and streamlined, we want to be clear as to what the objective is for tonight's meeting. And the objective for tonight's meeting is for this board to consider the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of ensuring that the number that goes to the public as the cost to complete is the right number, and that the town will not be asked for any more money. Others may have other objectives for tonight's meeting, though anything beyond the stated objective is beyond the jurisdiction of this board and beyond the scope. The board does not, excuse me, the building committee does not report to the Board of Finance. This project, the police station project, does not impact the current fiscal year 18. It is not involved, it does not impact the fiscal year 19 budget that is under consideration. So those items are beyond the scope of tonight's discussion. Again, the objective is, the purpose is to meet as a board, to hear the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen with the building committee and the construction company to help us understand the numbers and to get confident that that number as a cost to completion is the right number. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Public comments, please.
Oh, excuse me, yes, sorry. Public comments.
Phil Hillman, ABC, Wall Street Road. I'm really unhappy that you have to be at this meeting tonight, as I'm sure most everyone in the community is, facing close to a million dollars in cost overruns. We don't know what the exact figure is, but we do know from a letter that was obtained by a board member in Fort Lauderdale under the Freedom of Information Act, that much of this cost overrun was known many months ago. This meeting could have paid its place many months ago for consideration to determine what the accurate figures would be. The accurate figure probably would have been a lot lower had the building committee or the Board of Selectmen hired an owner's representative or for the works. They did not. Now, I know that there's many members on the committee who are very diligent, they spend a lot of time as volunteers working through this, but the communication to the town, Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen, comes through the chair of that committee. Now, among other things that we've learned from what was obtained through the Freedom of Information Act, is that a certain schedule, cost allocation schedule, was missing in action when the contract was signed by Mr. Nickerbocker. That was last year. In fact, the contract as a construction manager at risk with a guaranteed maximum price, there still is no guaranteed maximum price because an offer from Downs Construction on a guaranteed maximum price wasn't rendered to the town until December 12th. And that, to the best of my knowledge and understanding, is still sitting unsigned, and I think it's up to the Board of Finance to determine, among other things, whether or not it can even be signed without authorization to go past the initial 13.5 bond. We heard at the public hearing that GMP is somewhere around $12,600,000. When added to existing or predicted soft costs, I believe the project is already past the bonded amount. So they can't sign it, which is a question perhaps you could ask of our town council. So, you know, this is a ship that has kind of hit the rocks, but what we're going to find out tonight is it's going to cost a lot of money. I would have preferred this to have been considered for inclusion on the capital plan discussion we had last night. I have faith in the voters that they would have been willing, with the turf field gone, to have spent the money to fully complete the project, including the additional $600,000 for the gun range, which was not part of the 13.5 bond. So now here we are, coming back a second time for a project. Everyone in town knows that I've supported this strongly. Coming back for a second time for a lot more money, we'll probably be at a special meeting without a machine vote, and beyond that, sometime later this fall, in the letter sent to the Board of Selectmen from Chief Finch, sometime later, come back to complete the gun range. I'd like to see that completed, but I fear that when that third time comes back, our friends who really want the turf field will come back as well, or there'll be other priorities, or this or that will be underway at that point with more plans for, and work on the Rockwell Johnson renovation, which many in town also supported. I fear that we'll have a 75-foot storage locker, much as the top floor of the library sat unfinished for a number of years before it was finally completed. I think there's a real risk that that's going to happen. But I'd like to talk about the captain of the ship for a second. The captain, not Mr. Nickerbocker, who stood silent when asked, "Who is the captain?", and eventually was answered by Mr. Mentee. He's the captain of the ship. Well, the ship's a little bit on the rocks. We're going to be asked to pay a million dollars, or close to it. Who's accountable? Does Mr. Mentee stay on? Is he going to stay on as chair of the committee to the building of Rockwell and Johnson? I'd like to just read one thing, and then I'll turn this over to the next speaker, is from the Town Code, Section 20, that talks about the composition of the permanent building committee. It says, basically, and let me get this here, it's important to repeat this, it talks about the composition, the terms of the hold office, but Section 20-2, Part 3, permanent members, each commissioner shall hold office until a successor is appointed and qualified, and the Board of Selectmen shall fill all vacancies on said committee and may remove any such member for cause. I think a million dollars overrun, failure to tell the town months ago, is cause to remove Mr. Mentee as chair. And I put this on the Board of Selectmen to remove Mr. Mentee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, everybody.
I'm sorry, just officially, I thank you.
So, I'd like to thank who shared, who shared this letter from Downs Construction, because it answers a lot of questions that I think were posed at the special meeting that was held, the joint meeting that was held by the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, where a lot of people were kind of saying, "Well, you know, we didn't, we don't." So, I don't know if Mr. Dunn is here, but he said he shared this with the building committee. I'm curious if that, if this was ever shared with the Board of Finance.
I'm sorry, which letter is that?
The letter is the April 3rd letter addressed to John Mentee regarding the police facility, which very, very clearly, I think, going all the way back to July of 2017, almost a year ago, talks about budget overruns.
I believe we do not have that.
I think it's really an important question. Money is managed by the Board of Finance, you guys will three-eight for money, especially considerations that goes to voters who are eligible, which will appropriate you when you develop the budgets. This information was known. This is not a secret. The Board of Finance in the town knew that there were significant cost overruns 10 months ago.
Mr. Minio, I'm going to have to address that. The Board of Finance did not know.
Okay, good, thank you. Then that's another issue, I think, that goes to what I just heard the previous speaker, because if this information was not shared through an entire budget process, that's unfortunate. You have a million, almost a million dollars in some cases over budget, and the people who have the decision for how we spend our money, how the budget gets developed, weren't given it? So with that said, I'm going to bring it to today. You're about to discuss appropriating new money. If this board moves to appropriate new money without establishing firm accountability and communication requirements from both the building committee and all of the other principals, I think you're not doing your jobs completely. You must demand full accountability. You have no option. It's the only way to get the faith back. You can't come back after spending, saying yes to this. Find out another cost overrun maybe happens, and he doesn't hopefully, and then say, "I didn't know." Because you didn't know this time, okay, but you know now, before you're voting to put the money out. With that said, my grandfather, who was probably one of the wisest men I've ever known, once said to me that the only well-done job is the job that's done well. Not finishing the station is not a job done well, not completed. Some people may disagree, you hear me be a little huffy sometimes about money spending, but coming back in six months and saying, "We need another $600,000," you think about it, that would be the fourth request for money, right? The first $14.1 million that got defeated, the $13.5 million that got passed, the $800, almost $900,000 today, and then another $600,000 to finish the gun range. My family's been involved in public safety all their lives. Training is paramount to allowing the men and women to do their jobs the right way. If you don't give them the tools they need, that's on us. So I would support going to a vote, a machine vote, let the town decide on either funding or quit adding coverage. With all due respect to the chief, who knows a lot more about law enforcement than I do, but I've spoken to some officers, training is important. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Peter, 97, Hardwood, Bethel. I have a couple of questions. Everybody was pointing fingers at the building committee, blaming them. Number one, when the project was started, it came in as a 2B building, which is not combustible. They changed it because of the wood construction to a 4B. Did that add to the extra cost, did it increase the sprinklers because they had sprinklers in the upper area? Everybody's pointing fingers at the building committee, pointing fingers at the architect. That's who you're dealing with. These changes come from them, not from the building committee. They told us we never completed a project in Bethel, well, every school was completed on time and on budget. We double clerked because it works. It doesn't work. You have to be in every building meeting, you have to discuss what the architect's doing, because there's a lot of stuff put in there that you don't need. Very screwy, they put firewalls and you didn't need it, $25,000. A lot of stuff happens. Police station, they got glass windows in the stairwells. Don't need coat, they're too big. Architects fall. So you need a thorough review, what these costs are, to find out exactly what happened. Don't blame it on just the building committee. You're dealing in construction, you deal with the architects, you're dealing in engineers. Also, I heard that the sewer line had to be relocated because it was near the Soren Drina system. What would that cost? The building committee didn't put the line in, they didn't draw. So a lot of this stuff has to be reviewed and bring it to the attention, to the architect before the building is completed, to take action against whoever did it. But don't put the whole blame on the building committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jim Meehan, 37 Midway Drive.
I'm sorry, Jim what?
Meehan, M-E-E-H-A. I am a civil engineer by profession, I'm the deputy town engineer for the town of Greenberg in Westchester County, New York. I just want to make a few comments that I've heard, well, some of tonight and also from the last meeting we had about this, because regarding construction, it's general comments that I just don't want things to get out of hand. In any construction project, it's hard for me to actually say who is to blame for any type of construction overruns, because construction overruns happen for numerous reasons. Engineering fault, architectural in this case, construction, the contractor could be faulty in some ways, it could not be supervised at certain times, perhaps. And even just, things are just not seen originally. You dig down, you see rock that was not there, because you just never dug there before. These things happen, so I will not comment on saying that it is someone's fault there. But construction overruns are common for public works projects. In my 25 years-plus years of engineering, I've seen this many times, and more to the point, construction phasing, which is another topic to discuss tonight, is also not uncommon. And I've heard saying, "Oh, we should finish the whole police station before, we shouldn't be peacemaking now." That type of phasing, where you do one phase one year, you can account for the budget for the next year, is actually very common in municipalities. I've worked on projects where we do segments of roadway, and then the following year we rehearse a budget for another segment of roadway. To do it all in one year is financially very difficult and would actually repeal funds from other areas that are important at the time. So, I don't know, I cannot comment on how the police train, if they are sufficiently, the chief would certainly be better at it than I would, but if there is a way to, if there's thought out that certain things can be done now, and the financially make it more stable to put it off to another year, that just is something that is done. And I just don't want people to think that, pull their hair out thinking, "Hey, this, how could this possibly have happened? We have accountability." It's not accountability, it's just planning. Whether it's good planning or not, really rests in how the project gets planned itself. So, and that's, sometimes it's hard to see right away what that is. But I just don't want a lot of hysteria for something that can be done quite often in the construction industry. I will, I had comments on other things, but as we're only talking about the police station right now, we'll just hold up on that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
37 Midway Drive.
Any other comments?
Bob Legard, 11 Evergreen Drive. And to say that we've spent a lot of time tonight blaming who's at fault, how did this happen, how did we get to, from here, 10 months later, that we're behind the April? Why don't we just concentrate tonight on seeing that it doesn't happen again, and we set a dollar amount that will finish the project, and do it the right way now, and get it done, and get it finished, and make sure that we don't do this again in the future? That, to me, is more important tonight, to find out what the dollar amount is, and that we can get it done. If we had done this four years ago, when this thing whole started, under the guise of saving us money, people vote on projects time and again in this town, and we wind up paying more for them in the long run. I want to see that it's done now, right, and we set a dollar amount tonight, it's going to finish the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donald Cody, one Jennifer's Way. One comment I have is driving by the station. My understanding, when we approved the money, we were getting a full brick-faced building. What we're looking at now seems like we're going to get party board planking or clapboard planking in some spots, and brick in other spots. I don't know if you guys are looking into, is there some cost savings being done by removing that brick, which if we're spending extra money for these super-duty, long-lasting HVC systems, C systems, why are we putting light-duty siding on a building and not brick? And that's my only comment that I can see from the outside without being able to tour the inside. And the other comment is, why have we waited so long to put the siding on the building? The building isn't even watertight, it's just got Tyvek flying around. So I'm, that kind of bothers me a little bit, but that's my only comment.
We do have folks from the construction company, we'll come back to those questions during the analysis of the status.
Tim Draper, 36, Ant Patty's Lane West. The only, I sat in and listened to the last meeting, since public input was in the beginning, I really paid attention to a lot of what everybody had to say, and there's plenty of enough blame to go around, so I'm not in the blame game right now. What I would like to do, because it's a lot of money, we were kind of promised to finish building, and we're kind of get, not quite a finished building. I would hope that the board can figure out a way to not only get up to that $900,000, but to actually finish the range with the equipment. One of the things, when I sat on that board for eight years, when the police budget was presented to us, was the liability of officers not be able to train, and the liability that would end up on the town if something happened. And it was due to training or lack of. So, that was, that always rang, you know, always rang true to me, so it was like, and again, you know, there's some things that we haven't finished in the town, it took a while. You know, the library, obviously, is the biggest, you know, white elephant, you know, with that aspect. But I think it should just get finished, should try and find a way to finish it money-wise. You guys have a really hard job to do, finding a million and a half dollars to do this. So that's really all I got to say.
Thank you. Any others?
Paul Antalini, take up sign. I agree with Mr. Minio that you really need to get a set price this next time, that you cannot pass. And if it's over 1.5, then that's what it's going to be. Second thing is, I was wondering if the town can sell off property or whatever to cover the amount. It's just an idea, but I don't think the people should have to flip the bill. And third, I do not agree with Mr. Leggard that this should just be forgotten. I really think there should be accountability also. I don't think anyone that was involved in any big mistakes in this project should be on the next project. And I think something has to be done about that, because this can't happen again, but it also can't be forgotten. I think the entire amount, the 1.5, if that's what it is, should be appropriated and possibly go to referendum. I can't see anybody not voting for this, many people not voting for it if it's done right, if you have all the guarantees in place, and I'd like to see the station finished. I think to not finish it wouldn't be right. I also would like to know why the construction company and architects said they could do this for 13.5 way back when it was approved, and then we weren't told at that time that the prices could change due to going to the market, which is what they're saying now. I think that was, we were hit with that suddenly. I mean, anybody can say that, "Oh, the prices are different now." How do you agree on something and then say, "Well, you know, now prices are all different, or we couldn't get the bids?" I think it was a big mistake not to get final bids and a final price. That's it.
Thank you.
In defense, I had never said to forget finding out why this happened, or to blame anybody. I said, "Tonight's not the night to do it."
Okay, with no more public comment, we'd turn it over to, for Selectmen, Nickerbocker, representing the Board of Selectmen.
Good evening, Chairman. The Board of Selectmen met in special session on Monday, April 16th, to consider a request from the Public Site Building Commission that we, that was from a letter dated March 22nd, 2018. And in that letter, which you have a copy of, and you also have a copy of my report, the Public Site Building Commission requested an amount of $888,678, and provided backup documentation, which they believe is sufficient, and they have reviewed, and they believe is sufficient, to complete the building as it was approved by voters. I want to come back to that point. The referendum of December 2015, which was approved by voters, did not include the inside of the training range. In fact, at that time, there was a great deal of optimism that the entire project would come on so far under budget that it would be possible to complete the training range with leftover funds at the end of the project. And indeed, the early bids that came in supported that optimism. The earliest bids that came in on site work and concrete were far below the expected level, so there was a lot of optimism that that was going to continue to the end of the project. So, in consideration of the Public Site Building Commission's request, we did not add the training range amount to it. We only dealt with the $888,000 plus that was originally requested. Public Site Building Commission gave us three options to consider. Option number one is, as with every type of project, do nothing with the request, force the project to be completed within the 13.5 million that was originally specified. Neither the Board of Selectmen nor the building committee liked that option very much, because it would have resulted in, I believe it was possible, the Public Site Building Commission said they could complete the building in that regard, but with compromises so severe that it would impact the functionality of the building, and simply require additional costs in upcoming years, probably quite soon, to correct what was left out of it. That would mean compromises to the functionality of the inside of the building, as well as not providing the shell of the training range at all. Option number two was to provide the additional funding, as noted, and to do it immediately or as quickly as possible, to allow the, to allow the building to be completed on its current schedule. And option number three was to complete the building, provide funding a year from now. In other words, to do as much as possible this year up to the 13.5, and then next year, in a different budget year, come back and look to complete the range. The Board of Selectmen considered those three options, and we feel very strongly that option three is not viable, because we already know that putting it off a year would result in possibly more market changes that would affect the prices. It would certainly result in mobilization charges, so it would be basically just throwing money after a problem that we already have, and wasting upwards of $100,000, maybe much more. So, the option that the Board of Selectmen chose was option number two, which is, we voted unanimously that night to make the recommendation to the Board of Finance, that we appropriate the $888,000 and schedule a special town meeting to do that. One word about the, about the training range, again, that has been the subject of a lot of discussion. The afternoon of the 16th, we did receive a message from the chief of police, which I'll read into the record. With the understanding, and this was addressed to me as first Selectman and to Mr. Mentee as chair of the building commission, with the understanding that the $888,000 is still needed to complete the building, and another $600,000 is still needed to complete the interior of the range to make it usable, the most appropriate process, as I see it, is to move forward immediately with the building, as this issue is time-sensitive and cannot wait any longer. Upon or near completion of the building, June, July, or August, I will move forward with a special appropriation request to complete the interior range, presently quoted as $600,000, but possibly offset by other contingencies. So the chief's request, which the Board of Selectmen honors, was to hold off on that on the belief that there could be means to reduce that cost and handle that separately. And that was the original plan anyway, as with the referendum of 2015, was to equip the range separately as a separate capital item. And that is basically the sum of our report on that, and our recommendation is to proceed with the $888,678.
Thank you. Again, the objective of this meeting is for the Board of Finance to develop a high level of confidence that the sum that is being requested is sufficient to build out the project as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, consistent with the chief's recommendation. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the building committee to introduce themselves, and then perhaps give us a direction for how to have this discussion. We do have a letter from Dave Patrick that some of us have been looking at and using as a kind of an organization of our thoughts, but if you think there's a better way to discuss the numbers, we will refer to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here to be with us to review the work necessary to complete the status, based on, as Mr. Nickerbocker said, the $889,000 plus dollars. What we've done is we've looked and developed a subcommittee from the Public Site and Building Commission to speak in behalf of the commission in its entirety, to look at this funding. Along with us, we've asked Captain Pugner to be here to speak in behalf of the police department on some of the costs, but we've also requested confirmation from Downs, that they be here, and they're sitting here. As I said, my name is Dino Waltieri. As I said, my name is Dino Paul Tieri, and I'd like the rest of the Commission and these other invited guests to stand up and mention their names.
Hi, I'm Roy Steiner, also a member of the committee. We had looked at these prices, spent a lot of time with Downs reviewing them. We are very comfortable that that 889 figure will finish the building. You know, we want to go through and just explain some of the finishes as, as we see. Just to make sure everyone is clear as far as what we're going to get.
Thank you.
Josh Adams, President of Public Site and Building Commission. Seeing as these gentlemen have said, we're comfortable moving forward with the number we're providing for you tonight. We reviewed a lot of costs and estimates, and we feel, feel good.
Captain Steve Pugner, I was tasked with a lot of additional items that are involved in the soft costs, such as furniture, phone and IT, and anything that falls into that furniture category, fixtures and other equipment.
I'm Ryan Patrick from Downs. I'm the project manager on Bethel PD, and I'm here to help answer any questions regarding the hard costs. We've also been tracking the soft costs and working directly with the Building Commission.
And I'm Dave Patrick, and I'm also with Downs, and I'm here representing the management of Downs Construction Company.
So our objectives, as we saw them, again, to look at this funding is, we broke the funding down into two categories, hard costs and soft costs. The breakdown will be handled primarily by Roy and Josh, they're doing the speaking. We have representatives from Downs, as I said, to handle the detailed questions. And certainly feel free to speak out anytime you want to any of the questions. We also brought along some contracts and some data to support the numbers that are there. And as Mr. Steiner said, we are very confident with the number that we have been put forth, that we can complete the task as directed. On the GMP, as far as the hard costs, as far as we go, I'd like just to, you know, kind of go back to the 889 figure. And the reason we are comfortable with this, we reviewed this, we spent considerable time going through it item by item with Downs. The change orders that are reflected in this, I'm going to have Ryan go through that in a little bit, but, you know, we're working with completed drawings now. The value engineering has been taken, taken into account. At least 70% of the project is complete now. All the contracts have been awarded. The job is basically bought out, in fact, the job is bought out. So we're, we're very comfortable with, with the number going forward on this. And, you know, as far as the, the range goes, that came back, we're providing the shell, concrete foundation, masonry, roofing, the framing, the walls, the storefront, science, the plumbing, basically everything is complete except for the HVAC and the interior item. So we're trying to give this, you know, this building is going to be a, a solid building ready to be fit. So, you know, the, it didn't have some of the items that, that are coming up. I, I think a little bit in defense, as we were going forward on this, and we spent a lot of time, the Police Department has spent a lot of time as far as researching various HVAC systems within the range, and to be honest with you, we're better that we are buying some time on this. We're finding significant differences with the systems that were designed in, in the range, which were, you know, double the price of comparable or, or an equivalent system. So, so there is, there can be some good that can come out of this also. You know, kind of going forward on that, I, I think the, the Police Chief and, and Police would like to probably comment on that, but, you know, I, I think that, that, you know, both sides, I think we are very comfortable as far as, as far as the building side. Maybe Ryan could just spend a couple of minutes and just go through, you know, just kind of explaining the change orders as far as what we had, because we've done a lot of value engineering to date on this, and we have reduced the pricing down.
Mr. Steiner, just one question, and it may be a request. I believe, I understand what it means to say the job is, all the jobs are bought out, but can you break that down to kind of non-construction person's terminology?
Yeah. Once, once we get a full set of plans, we go through the public bid process, we select the low responsible bidder in each category, and then we go to contract. So what, what Roy is saying is, in all the major categories and all the, all the material categories, we have actually executed contracts and purchase orders with our subcontractors to provide that first.
I see.
And I would also note that any, anybody on, on our projects that's over a $50,000 contract also provides upon.
I see. And are those, so those set price, the town will not have any exposure to those numbers?
Right.
Okay. And then the request I have is, we're going to start with, I believe, right, the $12,649,583 number?
Correct.
The beginning of the GMP. We, we are in, well, we have a schedule, a detailed schedule showing all the items that amount to that. Can you just kind of walk us through this list and let us know, you know, are there any items in this list that you would be concerned about changing or causing future problems?
Sure.
Because it's, it's the starting point, right? It's grounding the 12.6.
And I think what, what might make sense is to start maybe one step before that, just for anybody that, that isn't familiar with construction contracts. You know, there's a variety of different delivery systems, that's what we call them, delivery systems. It can be a design-build project, it can be a lump-sum bid project, and it can be a construction management at-risk contract, it can be a construction management cost-plus contract. And, you know, probably showing my age now, but back when I started in construction, which was almost 37 years ago, whenever we got to a contract discussion, it was always, are you going to be working with an AIA contract or are you going to work with an AGC contract? AGC being the Associated General Contractors of America. On the construction side, we always wanted the AGC contract because it favored us. On the AIA contract, the architects would always advise that they wanted it. Well, somebody got pretty smart, and I would guess that this is back in the early to mid 80s, and said, why don't we get the AGC and the AIA together and jointly negotiate standard terms and conditions of these contracts? And so that's what we have today, and it's been 35-plus years and millions and millions of dollars in lawyers that have gotten together to put these contracts in place. And so the contract that we have executed with the town is an AIA 133 construction manager at-risk contract. And what that calls for is a set of, of guidelines to take the preliminary drawings through the completed drawings to get to what we just described as completely bought out. With that, once we, once we have the comfort that we know what the total cost is, we then prepare the GMP amendment, as, as you said. That's, that's an, an article in the contract, it's required in the contract. You provide the GMP amendment, that gets executed, and then whenever you make dollar and cents or scope changes to that contract amount, you sign change orders. And I think you'll, I, I assume that they have, you have the packet that has change orders one through four?
Yep. We do.
Yeah. So, so from, from the original GMP amendment, which describes all of the, all of the costs of the work, the AIA and the contractors associations have been working hand-in-hand for years to develop sections that we identify by number as to costs so that you can identify, for example, you know, section number 2,000 is site work. So your specification is section 2,000, our bid package is, is written around section 2,000, but it develops a scope of work for that entire bid package. And we do that all the way through. You can see that, you know, 3,000 is cast-in-place concrete and masonry and structural, and goes all the way to the end where you end up on, with electrical. And then, you know, there's additional items that, you know, get, get thrown in, you get to, you know, integrated technology in this case. But every scope of work within these projects has got a number that's assigned by the AIA, and it allows us to classify the costs that are contained within that scope of work. And once you have that scope of work, you know, the architect has written a specification and done a set of drawings, and so you wrap your scope of work with your subcontractors around the specification, the drawing, our supplemental instructions to bidders, as well as our contract and their contract. So that's sort of an overview of how we get to all of this. Now, as it relates to the GMP, I can assure you that we would not be prepared to present this GMP and those four change orders had we not vetted this thoroughly. So we don't, we don't get to this stage in a process and say, we're prepared to execute this amendment and guarantee that the town of Bethel, that this is the total cost for what's shown on those drawings, written in those specifications, and is outlined in our contract.
Thank you very much.
I have a follow-up question if I may. So I understand what you're saying about bought out, having all the contractors bid and bonded. What's the general timing on that? Let's, let's not discuss the change orders, because I understand that comes later in the process, but for the original contract, is before you provide a price, is that all done at that time? Or has things progressed through the process differently?
I think, I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question, but I think what, let me just see, is the, is the question, have we gone through the complete process?
Correct. You said, you said, as of now, everything is bought out.
Yes.
So we have a total assurance.
Yes.
And I want to know, okay, we're bought out now. When in the process were we bought out before, or is this the first time? I mean, you know, I'm, I'm saying exclude the change orders because
Yeah.
Obviously, that's, that's coming during the event. But prior to beginning of construction, prior to all the approvals, is everything bought out?
No.
Okay. So help me understand when that, that process occurs.
Yeah. In this, in this type of a project, and in many projects, the drawings come out and typically design will go through what we consider a conceptual design, then schematic design, then design development, and then construction documents. Construction documents are the documents that generally is the, are the documents that we price and we contract for. In this particular case, we, the first three bid packages that came in, I think we've all talked about that, came in under budget. And the next four bid packages, five, four? No, it's more than that. But there are four critical packages, let me put it that way, that came in over budget. And so at that point, you raise your hand and say, we, we need to, we need to assess this. Again, we've gone through the public bid process, we've opened them, everybody knows what these numbers are. So now we need to assess, what do we want to do? You have an option to execute a contract with those contractors at that number and proceed. You have an option to throw the bids out and have it rebid. In this case, we had six, I believe, six to eight bidders in every one of those categories, and all of those bidders are bidders that we've worked with extensively in our history. It wasn't a mistake on the bid. And then your third is to execute a contract with the low responsible bidder and then get to work and try to, try to value engineer the project and find out where are the problems? And can you come up with an alternate design, an alternate sequence, an alternate constructibility review that allows you to take cost out of the project without changing the value of the project? And so, once we got to that bid stage and we had that problem, that's when we started working with the Building Commission to value engineer or start to cost management. And it, I, I think it took until September to get to what you will see in change order number two, the lion's share of that, being about a $300,000 decrease in cost.
Can you just clarify what the four bid packages were that came in over budget?
Masonry, fire protection, plumbing, and HVAC.
Is fire protection the sprinklers that were mentioned before? Okay, so masonry, fire protection, plumbing?
Plumbing.
Plumbing and HVAC.
That's a question about the HVAC, because it seems like that was kind of where the largest number. And again, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, and throughout the night, you're not going to see me point fingers at anyone. But to hear that we had a $600,000 overrun, which came to roughly 30% of what you budgeted, based on the fact that guys were busy, was beyond insulting to me. Because the fact is, if guys were that busy, you wouldn't get eight people to bid on it. When we put things out to bid for the town where I work, sometimes dealerships don't bid on it because they have enough sales and they don't want to deal with another police car in their fleet. So I guess what upsets me is, I'm, I'm just a very factual person. And what my gut is telling me is, the facts here are that we designed a Cadillac system, which, again, I'm not putting a value judgment on it. I just want an honest assessment of why we're $600,000 over on HVAC. And please don't insult me by saying because guys were busy and were working in Bethel, you wouldn't have gotten eight bids from guys who were equally as busy. So what is your assessment, or who, I know, Josh, you're our resident expert on HVAC, you do it for a living. I mean, can you give us an assessment on why we were so?
Just globally, what happens is, you know, once the architect puts this on the plans and the process starts
Can you just be a little louder, please?
When the architects draw the plans up, and they have the specs that they want to be using, and they start rolling on those specs, pricing gets bid to those numbers, it's very difficult to unwind them back at that point.
I understand that. See, the fact that we engineered a real good system?
We, we absolutely did.
And we, we probably
And then we brought it back, and we said, well, let's start to bring it back from there. But it's very hard to get back, dollar for dollar, what you have.
There's no value judgment. I just want to know, I don't want to hear that we were busy, so we increased 30% on our bids.
The reality of what happens is, is you can't get it back.
Now, was the design based on our recommendations, or was the design based on the architect's recommendations? And that's where Mr. Valenti, who, people who don't know, used to be our former building inspector.
He had a lot of good points.
Yeah. He, he was our former building inspector.
Unfortunately, this is what happens, is the system starts, starts to run, and you can't get it back. These items, when they're put on the plans, are very difficult to unwind.
Because if, if I remember, I heard a representative from Downs say that this was the first time they had come across something like this in terms of systems being used, and they weren't familiar with this.
It's a complicated system, but I think we've unwound it without degrading it.
So how far over are we on that bid now, on HVAC, after we unwound it?
Approximately $400,000.
Okay.
Hey, let's see.
Again, there's no value judgment. I just wanted to, because there were other people who were insulted to hear that guys were busy.
Kind of a simplistic view as far as what, what happened.
I appreciate your honesty. Thank you.
Can you, can you give us the same kind of explanation around plumbing? Because that's all, that was also a significant overrun, unless that's been decreased through the value engineering or unwinding as well?
Normally, they're grouped together, is the problem.
HVAC and plumbing. So the complexity of the HVAC necessitated increases in the plumbing, is that what I'm hearing?
So the plumbing, it's a very similar scenario.
What we got for pricing from many subcontractors numerous was significantly higher than the average that we have seen across the last five very similar projects, all police stations. Final cost, down to dollars per square foot, was significantly higher. And we did remove some major aspects through the value engineering process, but again, getting dollar for dollar back is
That's the problem. Once the firm has planned, try to back it up, you don't get dollar for dollar.
So I guess a question that I would have for moving forward, which may or may not vary yet, but my question would be, if we were doing this again, what would we do differently?
As far as?
I don't mean to, sorry. I think that was a little
Apparently Paul has the answer.
My opinion. I think obviously, I mean, the review of the specs initially, in my mind, is the most important thing. And I think we all have to spend more time taking the time and reviewing each spec to make sure we're not, I'm not going to say a Cadillac, but we're, you know, we want good quality without going over the top. Because the problem is, is you can't say it later. You can't say, oh, now I want to just You can't say, "Oh, now I want to just step it down," because the plans, everything's been developed to that spec, and it follows from one sub to the other. It's hard to do. So you have to spend the time upfront, and, you know, I will say, I think we have learned, we're jumping in very early right now on the school projects with the initial stages, before any of the plans are developed, fully developed, along the same lines. We're trying to get ourselves in early with the architects to say, "No, you have to understand Bethel and us, and what we want." And I don't think we had a clear feel on that. That's just an honest assessment.
I have a question. So, the specifications for our police station, are they like way out of line of specifications of other police stations that have been built? I mean, I'm trying to understand why...
No, I don't think they are.
Okay.
I just, you can always do things differently. And, you know, it's, if we relook at things from where we are now, we can look back on, it's very easy to do, and, you know, we can see where we should have spent a little more time. We still have an excellent building that's well-built. Downs is doing a very good job. Very pleased.
Just a couple. One, I'm going to agree with you. I was fortunate enough to take a tour of the station on Sunday, and I'm very impressed with the facility that's being built. Will definitely serve the needs of the town well, well, well into the future. With that being said, just really quickly, because there were a few comments from the public that I wanted to address, one from Mr. Minio, in terms of full accountability. It's important to understand whose role is what in this process. And a board of finance, once we approve the funding, or the bond goes forth, it's really out of our control. I know you don't want to hear that, but it's the truth of the matter. Once we've approved the money, we're not the construction manager, the charter doesn't give us that authority to say, "We don't like the way this is going, we're pulling the money back now." We've asked for accountability, and I could assure you that. We've been talking about capital projects since I've been on the board for the past three years, saying we only want to approve those that are shovel-ready. We've talked about moving forward, how we're going to change capital projects. So, the board takes what you say very seriously, but I want you to understand, once we approve the $880,000, if that's the number it is, my personal feeling on it is, I would love to go forth with the full amount for the project and let the voters decide in a bond. I know a lot of people have talked about timeframe, and this is meant in a very polite way, that's really not my issue. I didn't put us in this issue, I didn't come to the board a month before they said we needed the money. So, my feelings are, finish the police station the right way. But I just wanted to make sure you understood that. It's not, once we've approved it, it's outside of our, if they came back, we could say, "Wait a minute, wait a minute." Well, that's not, like I said, I understand what you're saying, but that's not, again, our...
Were you curious though?
I'm just going to follow the guidelines of the meeting, which is talking about financing. We could have that discussion another day.
I'd like to, oh, sorry, I did something.
No, go ahead.
I'd like to just continue along the lines of what my colleagues, board colleagues are doing. Again, when I look at this Schedule A112, right, the support for the GMP, we've got about 35 or 40 items on this list. We've mentioned four of them, the four large variance areas, masonry, plumbing, HVAC, and electrical. Again, this total comes to the beginning point of the 12.649. How do you all feel about the items that are in this list? Are there other areas, again, I think we heard in the public comment, that what we need to do is go forward and get this done right, and make sure we've got the number nailed down. How do we know that what's our starting point, the 12.649, is solid? We've identified those four items as previously having some variance in them, and they're big numbers, right? And here, we've got plumbing for about $650,000, HVAC for 1.8. But there are a couple other large numbers in here too, that we haven't talked about. How do we get comfortable, how do you all get comfortable, as our experts, that this is the right starting point, and that aren't going to be those kinds of variances?
To go back, we have contracts for all of these. And in the case of anything that's over $50,000, we have performance and payment bonds with those subcontractors. And by that, these subcontractors have got to be certified under the public bid process through quite a process that they have to go through. We feel comfortable with the subcontractors that we have, we feel comfortable with the assurance that we have in place with the performance and payment bonds, and with the contractual language that we have with these subcontractors.
Maybe just to pull out one or two of these items to help drive home that point, and this one might not be a good starting point, because it's probably passed, right? Structural steel framing, it's a big number, 261. Presumably, it's all in there already, right? Is that why the 261 is a solid number?
Yep.
Is there anything here, then go over to manufactured casework, $190,000, 299. Is that done, or is it open?
By done, do you mean contracted, under contract? Or work completed?
The latter, work completed.
Work is underway with it?
Okay, that's a good example. So, work is ongoing. It's all bought out, is what I think you're telling us. So that 190, 299 is not going to, besides change orders, is not going to move.
Correct.
If you were in our shoes, what other items would you look at on this list, again, of about 40?
I'll just start with everything above the subtotal. Temporary facilities, expansion control, and access doors. Aside from that, all items are under contract with the subcontractor.
I'm sorry, Ryan, one more time, give me this.
So with the exception of temporary facilities, the expansion control, which is budgeted...
What's the number?
The 07900 on the first page.
Got it, yeah.
And access doors and frames, 08310.
Yeah.
All other items that they complete are under contract.
What does with trades mean? What was that?
So, if you look at, let's say structural steel, we'll go back to that one, metal fabrication directly underneath it, it says with 05100. The metal fabrication was purchased with the structural steel framing, and is included in the number next to it.
But I think the question was with trades.
Yeah, like next to joint ceilings, it says with trades.
So, if you're looking at 07840, penetration fire stopping, what we say there is that any subcontractor that is making a penetration, they own their own fire stopping. We're not going to hire somebody else to do it. You put a, if you have to put a pipe through the drywall there, then it's your job to seal all of your own appearances, the ductwork, the piping, sprinkler piping.
So it's included in whatever contractual price they give you to do the work that they're doing for you.
Exactly.
To Bob's question, can you give us a total on the number that you have budgeted that you still don't have guaranteed maximum prices on? You said temporary controls, correct? That's 350, what's the other two?
Joint ceilings?
12,000.
12,000? Okay.
And the access doors and frames, 350,000.
350,000.
Dollars.
Oh, 350,000. So basically, we're looking at roughly somewhere in the neighborhood of 370,000 is what...
Yeah. Ten facilities would never be purchased, they're, you know, the ongoing expenses...
I understand. Yeah, you're talking like heat, electric, everything.
Trailers.
Out of that 350,000, how much have you spent so far?
I would have to check on that.
I mean, roughly, the entire project is about 70% complete, so it's...
Just like, just like once we start, we can't roll those dollars back. We're at 90% of the budget, I'm just curious, you know, are we right on target with the 70% on that? Can someone give me an accurate number, or no?
We can. Yeah, we can.
Tonight, or?
Well, we're going to have to run a call before.
Okay. It's just, and again, you know, we as a board here, everyone's concerned, like, I don't want to go through line by line. I mean, if you're saying everything but those three items are guaranteed, they're guaranteed.
What we're saying as an organization is, that whole sheet of paper is guaranteed.
So...
We are not, you know, if there is additional cost in temporary facilities and controls over and above the 350, then that's on us.
Okay.
And that includes the 333010 for the firing, firearms, training range, structure.
Everything on this sheet, and everything included in those four change orders.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, Cynthia.
Thank you.
So, I did a lot of research, I did a lot of reading of information, I've got a lot of papers, so I read a lot of emails, so I have a couple of questions. And I'm not blaming anybody, the funny thing is, I'm on the board of finance, and in my opinion, the money's the easy part. When I went through all these emails, what I saw was there were some communication issues, and there was some misunderstandings about the change order process, and just things that, in my opinion, have to be addressed really for this next round, have to be really laid out, like who, there were people from the outside the commission who were communicating with the contractor, and it just, you know, I could see where some things are not happening. But here's my biggest question. When you're talking about the subcontractors, and having a payment and performance bond, the issue that came up in the emails that I saw between Downs and Mr. Lawler, was that Downs was proposing to save the cost of their, your performance and payment bond, which is, I think, about $9,000.
90.
Not, okay, yeah, I got 90.
91,000.
Yeah, 90. And the way that you did that was to recommend dual obligation bonds. So what that means is, and Mr. Lawler can correct me, is that the town has individual contracts and guarantees from each subcontractor.
Individual bonds.
Right. But the overarching Downs Construction, we don't have a bond with you.
We only proposed to credit the bond to save money.
No, I understand that, but that's a really important thing, that we don't, and I know that Mr. Lawler had many, many questions, and I know that, from what I understood, he didn't feel comfortable, and again, he can speak up anytime he wants, that Downs, that we did not have, you know, it's almost like, this is the analogy, it's like, you know, instead of hiring a bandleader, you know, the town has to hire the trombone player separately, the drummer, the bass player, and really, you're the bandleader, so I'm just, I have concerns about that. That we don't have a...
Well, I can assure you this, we can modify the change order, give you back the credit, and I can have a bond.
No, no, I understand what you're saying, but the reasoning behind it, and this is the reasoning behind it...
Can you explain, can you explain a bond is first, so people understand?
Okay.
Some people look, can you explain?
Well, you think that's funny, but it's really not.
No one thinks it's funny. Can you explain what a bond is, please?
It's an insurance policy.
Correct.
It's basically an insurance policy, that if for whatever reason, we fail to complete the project...
You walk off the job and say...
You make a phone call to Travelers, and Traveler sends a representative down and says, "We're sorry for the commotion, we're going to finish this project on Downs' behalf."
Right. It would be one, it would be one phone call. The way it's set up, if something goes wrong, you know, we could be making five phone calls. So, I'm just saying that that's something that came up in all the stuff I read, that caused me concern.
Okay.
And the other thing, what was the contingency? Do you remember what the amount was? Because I read about modifications of the trust for the HVAC, and that was a whole thing about the contingency allowance in your GMP. Do you remember what, how much that was?
Well...
Okay, so it wasn't that much, I just didn't see a number on that. And I just want to ask about the, and I'm not blaming anybody, because you know what? This is all, I'm concerned about the next round, you know? Because obviously, we're going to finish it, I mean, that's not really the question. So, the money part is easy, it's just wrangling it, that's the hard part. And so, the HVAC, this is what I heard you say, sir and Mr. Patrick, is that on April 12, is that you had not experienced this level of quality for, in other projects of the HVAC, that it was such a high quality that you'd never experienced it, because I took notes in my head of it. So what does that mean?
Of similar projects.
Right.
Yeah, I think what we're, I think what we were trying to convey is that we took historical data for, I don't know how many we did, five or six other police departments, and then we put escalation on, let's say, one of those was done in 2009. So, industry standard is to put 3% per year for escalation, to get it up to today's dollars and cents.
I didn't get that from what you were saying.
So...
Completely different.
Well, I think it runs to the overall cost of the HVAC system. So with all of those projects, six or seven projects, we have not seen an HVAC system cost this amount of money per square foot.
Right. But then, but then it begs the question, because you also said in that, at that meeting, that you don't argue with what's presented to you, you go out and you get the bid. So, if someone comes, like, the architect has a design, or there's some sort of request for a specific HVAC system, that you don't question it, like, because you understand their rationale, that they want this high-quality thing, but I would think if the overarching contractor might say, you know, "This could be a problem, because it's going to cost a lot of money." So I don't know what that role is, and that's, I'm concerned about the different roles of the different people. And I believe that, and is the architect not here?
No.
Right. Because that, and just confirm for me, that the change orders, it costs the town, if a change order is submitted, that goes outside the design. That's something that the, yes. But anything that has to be changed, and it's within the design, like, meaning, "Oh, we have to change this, this is what I designed, but there has to be change," that's something that the town is not responsible for.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Just to clarify, and I think I understand, the HVA system that was designed might not have been similar to ones you've done in the past, but the cost associated with changing the design, and maybe some of the other changes that would have to be made in mechanical engineering and whatnot, would have cost more equal to the system that, so, bottom one, all right. So that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at. They designed a system that, yeah, we could have saved money, but the problem to save money, we're going to spend more money changing what we've already done.
And also on the per-square-foot cost on these, you know, if you reflect it, a small building, Bethel's station is not particularly huge in comparison to some of the other ones. To get to that baseline bid, your per-square-foot cost on a smaller building is going to end up even higher, is just the way it works. Kind of, to get the base systems into a small building are very expensive, it doesn't cost a lot to add, add different things.
I think one last thing on the GMP, before we continue on the reconciliation. Ryan, you've got the percentages?
So, it's $229,865, which should be 66%.
So, in the long list of items, that, the long list of items that add up to the first number on the hard cost, the GMP total hard cost of $12,649,583, everything was billed out except for three items. Temporary facilities for 350, 278. Expansion control for 12,000. And access door frames for $350,000, which add up roughly to 360, 360,000.
They agreed if it went over, you guys eat that cost. That door, that's the door that was added to the downstairs where we needed egress? There was like a new door, it looks like was cut out in the lower level, for $350?
No, no, those are access doors for, like valves that are behind the walls.
Oh, okay, just a little something.
That's what that's...
Has the GMP amended and signed?
No.
All right, let's just finish out this point, right? So, of that open amount of 362, it looks like $229,865 has been incurred, is what you're telling us. Roughly consistent with the 70% overall completion.
That makes sense.
All right, so continuing down this reconciliation of hard costs, right? We start off with the GMP, $12,649,583. We come to change order number one, $115,469, comprised of three items, unsuitable material and upgrade, well, two upgrades. Can you explain those to us, and why should we not be concerned, or why should we be confident that that's not going to happen again, and there's not going to be an outage there?
So, the unsuitable material... So the unsuitable materials, obviously, we've done our digging. So shouldn't have any further concerns there. There was about eight hundred cubic yards that need to be removed of concrete. As we go further on in the discussion, we'll start talking about the other unsuitable material, which was at firing range. That actually was carried in the construction contingency. Altogether, it was twenty-five hundred cubic yards that needed to be removed, a burned-down barn, silos, failed concrete testing from the middle school, but it was a significant amount, that we had to bring structural fill in, in twelve-inch lifts and.
So in answer to, but in answer to the question, the question is, why should you not be concerned? The, the answer is, is we've done all the excavation, we've taken out the bad material, we've disposed of it, we've replaced it in compliance with the engineer's recommendations and the testing laboratory overseeing our subcontractors, and we're done.
No knock-on consequences, there's be sinkage, drainage problems?
If, if there is, then we're going to go back to the site subcontractor that put the work together.
Who's bonded.
And all of the installations are tested, verified by an independent company, STL. We're on-site for every compaction.
And those items just can't be, I mean, there was test holes in various spots there, and you can move over five feet, and there you have it. So, you know, everything's grown over, so there's no way these things can be recognized.
Josh?
So in regard to the equipment, we chose to upgrade HVAC equipment that goes on the building, three of the units. You know, we'd worked with, with the engineer, we'd gone to their office and done a lot of reductions in the system, things that we felt the police department didn't need, and they still maintain, you know, a high-quality system. So there's a couple of change orders, you know, further back, a reduction, a credit to us, actually. And within that, you know, we knew that was coming, so we were able to upgrade the equipment, extend warranties on these units, and the life cycle early, so for seven thousand dollars, you know, at all, I think it was money well spent. You know, we just recently replaced the system in the high school for eighty thousand dollars, replaced just the heat exchanger in that unit. That was actually the equipment they were proposing for this building, and I wasn't going to let that happen. So the equipment that's proposed here, I believe, has a twenty-five-year, twenty-year warranty on those heat exchangers, those units are only eight years old.
And Josh, same kind of question, any ripple effects that may come up somewhere else?
No, I mean, the units are bought, they're on the roof. Done.
Are there any, well, maybe anyone on the committee would know, are there any changes or credits that you guys feel are due to the town that are still being argued with the construction company?
In regard to this change order?
For any change order.
We're, we're working on something. There was, there was a change order on the steel, there was a grade difference that someone didn't catch a wonderful grade difference, so they had to build chairs, separate, I think, steel chairs that they had to put on from.
So none of that is reflected in any of this, because there still are some.
Or we have some arguments.
We have a list of things we may be able to.
So that's, that's not in this right situation?
That would be a credit for the town.
Correct.
Do you know how much that is, ballpark?
That one was about ten thousand.
The, the steel modification was about forty-four hundred dollars.
I thought told them that.
What's that?
So there's a list of.
The column modification?
Can you shoot that one?
It's not a hard number, not a lot.
Those are eggs we can't put in the basket yet, you just, you don't know.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, there are, there are still some questions on design.
But I think what's important to say is that the cost of that is reflected in these numbers.
If anything will.
So if it were determined that that was a designer, and in, I know, I know everyone likes to blame the contractor, I've been doing it for thirty-seven years, but if by chance that was the design side, then that would be a reimbursement to the town, but this number wouldn't change.
And there already have been, you know, maybe a couple of small issues that we've been able to communicate with them and talk about, and they have, you know, Downs Construction has credited us some of those fees. So it's just an ongoing, something we're working at, so there's not major ones.
Right. No, I just think it's important to point out that you guys are looking at.
Correct.
Things that might be owed to the town too, rather than him, no offense to you. Believe me, my customers say the same thing to me, you owe me, I, you know what I mean?
Trust me when I tell you. They're looking at every nickel.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I think that's important to get after, because you guys really have taken a lot of heat over this.
We wanted to stop the job over, you know, a small dollar amount, so it comes out of our contingency.
Got it.
They've shed some other contingency on us.
Since the architect's not here, we're just blaming them.
I was just going to say.
No.
We take our lumps.
You know, I, I think the taxpayer would likely be, Bethel taxpayer would be like, just as likely to be upset if we undershoot as overshoot, right? Either way.
Right.
So are, are you telling us with a high level of confidence that these items that are going to be settled likely in our favor, there are maybe a number of them, but dollar-wise, not material?
Correct.
I don't think they're material, no. Let's go to the project, no.
Hundred thousand, fifty thousand.
They won't say.
You gotta keep asking different ways.
Well, we don't want them to know how much we're going to beat them up for, not yet.
Fair enough, not, not material.
Maybe low double-digit thousands.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we are, we are looking at every item.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I just want to say, because, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit pathological in my research, and I, I come off as being harsh sometimes, but I absolutely appreciate all the time that the commission put into this, because I know how much work this is, and I can imagine that there's so many moving parts, and that's why I just, you know, I'm just so, I'm very committed to the communication, and I just want that to, that's what I'm concerned about, and I want that to be really set up as a real, really specific about who gets copied, who's making decisions, because that's where I think it can go off the skids, you know? So if you would just take that point into consideration, I'd appreciate it.
So to wrap up that change order, there's the last one for the honeywell controls. You know, it never, what was written in the bid spec for what we asked for in controls wasn't, didn't come out in the end. So what was specced and what was bid wasn't what we asked for. So we had to change that narrative and revise that and get the ad alternate. So that reflects the ad alternate for the control system that we wanted for the town. You know, it's easier of a system, there's the one that was specced, there's one contractor in state that can work on that system, and that's it. This system here, it's what we call an open system, and, you know, easily there's twelve contractors that can work on this, so you're a little more price, price point or competitive down the road. If they need to buy parts, any, any issues, any service calls, you know, it's almost off the shelf, if you will, as opposed to going to one proprietary provider for that service, which is really, you know, it's a little bit cheaper early on, but on the other side of it, you'll pay for it, so.
Okay, can I just ask a question, and again, going back to kind of Mr. Minio's point for us, and maybe as we move forward as a board when we're looking at bonding, big numbers like that. And this question is for the three members of the building committee. In retrospect, do you think having an owner's rep would have made a difference for you guys? Like, if you could go back in time, would you have felt that for us as a board or for future building committees fifteen years down the road, when you guys are not on the board and off to bigger and better things, would you recommend that for projects over a certain dollar amount, that we have an owner's rep involved? And be honest.
It's a debatable question, that's.
It's important for us as a board, because to, to Mr. Minio's point, and a lot of people have come to me, and I don't like to speculate, I really don't. I, I just like facts, and again, no one's looking to blame, we can't go back, 2020's perfect vision, right? If we're looking backwards, and we all see things perfectly, just as a board, you know, we've got some other big projects coming up down the road that people are going to be asking for significant dollars to do. Would it be your recommendation in the future as a board that we recommend, or with the project, you think? It might have still ended up being the same cost, but maybe you would have had a scapegoat to say, "We hired him," you know, "He didn't," you know, I mean, let us know what you guys think, honestly.
So we are, we are figuring in an owner's rep for the school project, just because of capacity and size of that.
So for the, for the school?
You know, as a volunteer, part-time committee, there's no way we could possibly field all of those questions with two schools that are renovated to new, all occupied, so.
It's complicated.
And we have that built in.
I don't know.
Do you think, maybe?
I wanted to hear Mr. Steiner's comment.
I didn't, I didn't think it was, you know, absolutely needed on the size of this project. I, I kind of go back to some of the items I said before, I think if we can get involved, I think the committee, we have some experts on the committee, I think Josh is, and John terrific with the HVAC and the systems and what have you, we all have an expertise per se, and depending upon our contractors too, which are really qualified. I do believe a lot of it has to do with looking at the specs early on and understanding the specs early on, because I, you know, again, as I say, that, once that starts moving out, you know, these items, we've talked about, you know, the honeywell and what have happened.
Do you think as a committee, that, Dan, maybe this will need to come from Bob, as a committee, it's something you could discuss and give us some guidance in the future, saying, "Hey, look, this is where," you know, in, in the police world, when we have a major incident, we always, you know, have a debriefing after it, and we say, "What could we have done better?" Rather than point the finger saying, "You messed up, he messed up, you're the captain, you're not the captain," give us a guideline of what we as a board can actually.
Exactly what you're saying.
Look at and say, "All right, in the future, here's where we need to pay attention to things and make these recommendations when you're not here or we're not here and future boards are here."
Even for this next phase, because even though it's a small, smaller amount of money, it could still, we did Amarastra, we had it, didn't we have Peregrine, weren't they the agent for the town?
Consulting engineer, not quite the same.
Okay.
Right.
But I mean, just.
The thing with an owner's rep, if you don't get them in really early, so that they're actually the ones we do in the design spec, most of these costs, these overruns, they would have never gotten cost.
But again, maybe it's something when we do conceptual plans as a committee, you budget money to have that owner's rep there from the beginning, to say, "Time out." It just seems like it would be money well spent.
One of the issues also is that, you know, again, going back to Pete's point, a lot of these items, you know, the owner's reps, sometimes you'll end up with third-party reviews on these, and the, the engineers per se, they have a, they have a spec per se that, that they want to use, and, you know, there gets to be conflicts between architects and then engineers on the project, and, you know, at the end, we're trying to get the best quality.
I guess from my point of view is, you guys are volunteers, and we're lucky to have you. It just seems like it would take a lot of heat off of you, and it would be, we give you the ability.
Yes. If they're involved very early in the project, I think there's value.
Wait, well then, we'll have future projects down the road that maybe they could be incorporated in, because I don't think it would cost eight hundred thousand, or maybe it would, I don't know, but, you know, maybe some of these things could have been avoided, and again, you're all very qualified.
It's all a function of time.
Yeah.
You were talking about how, how much it costs, you said eight hundred dollars.
I don't know.
It's all a function of time.
Right, yes, I hear you.
They're, they're paid by the hour.
I got you.
And it's usually somewhere between a hundred and twenty-five for a assistant, up to two hundred and fifty for a principal.
Okay, well, that's a matter of time.
So you can just map out.
We're just saying, would it be a consideration for future?
This project easily could have been a half a million dollars.
Okay.
Starting back from the, if you're right, at the beginning of time.
And then if you're very early on and you incorporate it, then that's part of the number, so.
Okay, just kind of continuing down, any more discussion on change order number one?
Can I ask, can I ask one question of Josh? So, you know, as I think about the HVAC, which is a significant number overrun, right? But then I think about what we have spent at the high school, it's at eighty thousand dollars to fix what's there, and we just approved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last night to fix what's there. So can you, I don't know if you're familiar enough to do this, but is there a way for you to give us some perspective on what's at the high school, why we're spending so much money to fix that versus what's now in the police station?
Just, just quality, yeah. We bought quality for seven thousand dollars.
For seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was an upgrade of seven thousand dollars.
Oh, but I don't just mean the controls, I mean the four hundred thousand overrun on the HVAC stuff.
All right, so it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't relate the same way. The police department, they did a lot of homework early on, before I was on this commission, and they toured a lot of police departments, and I don't know what all the complaints were, but I think one of the number-one complaints were HVAC comfort, it was huge. So, you know, maybe all those numbers that everybody's using as a, as a, you know, boilerplate for other police departments, those are all the ones that they might have had issues with. So the narrative that was put out to the engineer was to make sure we don't have that problem. We want to make sure that the HVAC system is, you know, perfect, there's no issues. A lot of those buildings have spent a lot of money later on fixing those systems, taking chillers out, putting new chillers in, replacing air conditioning systems, new control systems. So they spent the money on the backside fixing it all.
Still, like the high school, what was the original cost of the air conditioning for the high school? Because now we've, we're pumping three hundred, almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in the last year.
The high school project was a, a whole other project, and it had its own problems within it, so there were some issues with that from the very beginning, so I don't know if you can even.
Well, my only point is, we're about, we, this year, we will put, so what is it, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars into the air conditioning at the high school, and the cost overrun on this is four hundred thousand dollars. So, I mean, my question is, does buying a better system, does the high school problems justify that for the police station, or?
I would think to a certain capacity it does. I mean, they spent eighty thousand dollars to replace one heat exchanger in one unit.
And how old is the high school?
I think it's eight years old.
Eight years, is what we heard.
Eight or ten years old.
And this has a?
Twenty-year.
Does the entire system have a twenty-year warranty, or is it parts of the HVAC system that have a twenty-year warranty?
It's the heat exchanger that's a twenty-year. Every, every part of that unit has different warranties, with labor, with replacement parts, and, you know, life expectancy on it, so, you know, the part that fails the most, and, you know, we're going to attribute to this, is the most common part that fails, that's the most costly, is the heat exchanger, and that's exactly what we experienced, so spending a few extra bucks to get the better quality is, I mean, well worth it.
Thank you.
Kind of continuing down the list, we have change order number two, that's a credit for two hundred and ninety thousand nine seventy-one, kind of under the theory of errors, whether they're good or bad, is kind of unsettling. Can you guys kind of talk to us about what's in this two ninety, and how does it, how should we be thinking about it?
This is actually a product of the value engineering that we went through with all the subcontractors.
And for the layperson, probably, maybe just me, value engineering?
So initially, initially in the public bid process, we need to award to the low responsible bidder. So we award to A&amp;A Drywall at a number that's forty thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars higher than what ultimately their contract is now. It's the process we have to go through. We have to award to that contract, and then we write them a change order, taking out things that we've all decided are, can do less expensively, a different way. And so A&amp;A Drywall has an original contract of X, but it's, it's the original bid.
X plus forty thousand.
And now they have an amendment written to their contract, similar to our change orders, but an amendment written to their contract decreasing it by four hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars.
I'm sorry, why does it have to be done that way?
It's the state process, I, I can't, I can't answer that.
I think, to help that, you can't, you know, once you have those bids, that's it. In order to get that bid any lower, you have to change the scope or change the design, at which point you have to put it out to bid to eight people all over again.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that, the reason would be.
You took the lowest bid.
If you award on a lower number, another bidder could cry foul, and.
The bid process wasn't fair.
And say the bid process wasn't followed. So there's a process you have to follow, that's the process, and so we try to follow that right to the T.
So you get to a point where the bid is accepted, but you understand perhaps there's forty thousand dollars of savings to be had. Rewrite a change order?
Yeah.
Why is that fair in the process?
Well, we work with them to determine those numbers.
Yeah, they, and I think in, in terms of that process, they earn it, because they come to the table. Because they come to the table, it, it takes hours.
And this is how we can improve.
Right, you know, it's cut out of you. You go to the subs and say, this, this job might not go forward.
Are there any opportunities like that in the rest of the items on schedule A one-one-two?
We came up with, I want, I believe it was five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, one more time.
Five hundred and sixty thousand in potential savings. Some of them reduced the quality of the building. But we brought everything out that you could possibly remove from the project and brought it to discussion between ourselves, design team, and the building commission. And ultimately, they accepted two hundred and ninety thousand in credits that wouldn't significantly reduce the quality of the building.
So we, we realized fifty-two percent of the opportunities, the two ninety-nine-seven-one over the five-sixty roughly?
You could look at it that way.
Is that, is there a better way to look at it?
No, 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 I think what you have to realize is some of that five ninety, you, you take one look at it, you go, we can't, we can't.
It could potentially change the entire building, so, you know.
Well, we could say we reduced the quality of the building by fifty-two percent, so.
Well, they're saying we did.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we could look at it one of two ways, right? You could say that, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it goes either way, you know, just to be fair.
It becomes a debate amongst the groups.
That's not a dig on you guys, but I'm trying to say is, is, you know, it's not like we real. They gave five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The building committee looked at it, said some of these changes aren't great. The other ones, they probably reluctantly went along with knowing that they were in a budget and they had to, like switching from brick to hardy background, sure wasn't your favorite choice, but it was a necessity at the time to save money where it's not going to dramatically decrease the function of the building. Correct? I don't want to talk for you, I'm just trying to.
And are any of these items, in, in the opening comment, we had a question regarding thinner siding. I mean, I didn't quite follow because I'm not a construction person about.
That actually occurred, I believe, in between the referendum that failed and the next referendum, I believe, is where they decided to make a decision in design to remove the full brick and they would save a significant amount of money in the foundation, which I believe I was not a part of, but I believe was around two hundred thousand.
So it's not in here?
It is not in here.
It's in the top.
Before our time.
And, and to the question that the public comment wrote, you know, brought up, you know, what is the life of that hardy board and when are we going to have to replace that?
I would have to double check, but I believe it's a twenty-year warranty.
Twenty-year warranty.
Twenty-year warranty. And certainly it's not less than twenty.
And perhaps it will go longer, like it's going to take a long time.
Yeah, that's not twenty years to failure, that's twenty years to where. They feel comfortable with a warranty.
Right.
They're not going to warranty it to the last day.
Any other questions on the two ninety change order? Change order three.
So, this is, the first one is a credit for the window treatment at the cupola. There's a conversation that was brought up of further reduction, whether it was necessary to have to motorize shades at the cupola that are directly over the dispatch center. They ultimately decided that it wasn't necessary based on how those windows are built with the soffit that comes out, that there wouldn't be direct sunlight hitting the displays.
So with that, electricals still run to the point where if they determine someday, you know what, we need those shades, you can get them or you can just tint the windows for a couple bucks.
The second item is what we had discussed earlier, the P and P.
Any further questions on change order three?
So, so the building is built now, so you can see what's happening with the cupola, are we in good shape? Okay, good.
What's the second P in P and P, performance?
A, A.
Change order number four.
So the first one was to change the generator, generator distribution panel into three separate circuits to control the ATS, which is, it wasn't on the contract documents, but it is required by code. We receive a ASI from the design team telling us, notifying us of the change, and then we go out and get pricing.
Question to our building committee, do we, I take it you all are accumulating a list of items like this?
The next one is three emergency fixtures. Two of them were not on the contract drawings at door locations that existed. The third one is an emergency fixture that goes at the added door that was the result of the code review. So again, we received ASI direction from design to go out and get pricing and that for code, it will be required.
Now, just a question. I mean, I'm very familiar with residential construction, I know nothing about commercial construction. If we have a question about code and we disagree, because I remember at the, when we met the last time, there was some question about code and was it really code? Are you guys able to appeal decisions to Mr. Tierney or whoever it is up at the state? Or is it whoever reviews it, what they say goes, or there's no, where we say, this costs X amount of dollars, we really don't think this is necessary in to code or request a modification, or is that not allowed in a commercial building?
It's allowed.
It is.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be coming from us. We would not be allowed to challenge the code, but the design team. And generally, yeah, the, I mean, codes are an interpretation.
Correct.
And in this world, we had to hire a third party.
Behind you is the X building official. I wouldn't say that too loud with him sitting behind you.
In this particular case, a third-party reviewer had to be hired in order to do the code review, which is standard.
Yeah.
And in his determination, it was his opinion, and we argued it. I think the design, I should say, the design team argued it. But at that point, we were, we were so stretched out not having a building permit with what we had been granted already to get started.
And is there any idea on the cost that was to the overall project for future? And again, this is just for future, looking down the road. What was the cost on some of those issues that they felt weren't to code that they wanted changed and were necessary? If you had to ballpark it, you don't have to give us an exact number, we're not going to.
I mean, the biggest one was the change in the door, right?
Yeah, there weren't, the biggest issue was, was the amount of time it took to go back and forth. But ultimately, what, what truly changed, aside from a couple of details for the construction, was we added a door. Initially, they wanted to add a sidewalk, but we argued that one and got it down to just a concrete pad, which causes also.
And we lost time for gun cleaning, right?
And we had to modify the gun.
Sorry, gun cleaning room, it's really nice, much nicer than ours, just look, get on that.
Maybe he'll let you clean your stairs.
The dollar amounts in this change order, again, it's unfortunate, right? But they're not huge dollar amounts. But I think what one can potentially get some concern about is, are there other lurking issues like this? How many more inspections do we have or other concerns?
We took those into account as far as material testing would have due. We projected the amount of tests that have to be done to finish it up and we're within the budget.
So it's within the.
It's in the soft cross-handout that we provided. You'll see, there was one that's, you know, projected number, it's an email attached to, to us. And we're well within the budget still.
And a fifty thousand dollar number.
Why is that a soft cost and not a hard cost?
So the hard costs are what Downs will guarantee, the soft costs are what the town's paying for. Research that we've had in view, where we've had, my, working with the police department, FFVs and furniture fixtures and things of that nature. You know, obviously some bonding and legal fees that the town asks for, those aren't in their contracts. So it's worth the soft costs and we carry a budget for the soft costs.
So using kind of a defining line of what goes in the building versus what gets brought into the building is not a good, not a good line to draw between hard and soft costs?
The items that the town handles directly.
Like furniture and fixtures type of stuff?
Well, that's, again, that's brought in.
You also have. Did the town charge ourselves like a bond on cutting into the road and stuff like that? I mean, did we take money from ourselves even though we're the town?
They waived those fees.
We, we waived those fees, I'm, oh, I'm just seeing bond costs, so I'm hoping we didn't have to pay for road bonds and things like that.
Material testing, material testing is capable for the town just to pay the bill directly versus running through desks. I don't know, it depends how we can control. So of course, you know, something you can touch versus something that's just service.
Yeah, paying for the architect, that's, the town paid for that. We run it through them, they're going to mark it up. Certain things that we're able to buy without running through them. Any supervise, you know, the whole thing, obviously, but.
Did the state require a bond for the emergency exit on the three oh two?
I don't think so. The state didn't have any.
Well, they, they currently have no bond interest.
Yeah, I think because it's only an emergency exit.
And any other further questions on change order number four? All right, that brings us down then to the total of revised hard costs, twelve million, three eighty-two, five ninety-five. Same kind of question, I take it you all are high confidence, right? Ninety-nine point nine percent, three standard deviations off the mean, right? That we're, in, in all events going to be within that number on the hard cost?
Yeah, I think sort of a global way to, to explain it is, you know, we, we have a full set of construction documents, plans, specifications over here. And that tells a very big story about how to build a building. And on this side, you've got to guarantee that everything that's on those plans, we're going to do. And if we made a mistake, shame on us. But that's, it's the world we live in.
And we shouldn't be worried that there's thirty percent left open in the one-one-two items? Those three things we had talked about?
No. The cost of those items, we're, we're also guaranteed.
Any further questions on hard costs? What do folks think about taking a ten-minute break and then coming back to finish up?
Sure.
Let's recess for ten minutes so we can get back, just a little bit before nine o'clock. Thank you all for walking us through the revised hard cost total and helping us understand that. We're now on to soft costs, and I believe Captain Pugner, this is, this is you?
Some of the, most of them.
Okay, alright. I'm sorry, just what should we be looking at, this summary and this package?
Just this.
Can I just ask one quick?
Yeah, we never went over contingencies, how much is left, are we going to do that after?
I thought we'd do it after soft costs.
No problem.
Unless.
That's fine.
So just this package reflects soft costs. On the front is the cost breakdown, and then the pages behind it are the contracts that back up those costs that we came up with. So these are contracts with the town of Bethel that we've had a solicit to get or, and honestly, Captain Pugner has done the majority of this work, which is, you know, I can't, I can't even imagine what the cost savings is having him do this as opposed to hiring somebody to do this and to get these numbers and, you know, a lot of them are under. So, yeah, great job. So, I mean, you can go through them one by one, we can talk about them, behind every one of them is the backup to the cost that we represented on the front cover.
Again, I think it would be helpful to us achieving our objective of really understanding the numbers to go through each line item with an understanding of what it is. There's a little bit different order in mind, so if you don't mind.
Yeah, you get the back order.
You want the little?
No.
Alright, so this, you're looking at the dispatch relocation is the first one you guys. So dispatch and relocation is together a complete package, even though there's two separate numbers there. Dispatch relocation is moving all the equipment up into the new building and providing a lot of new equipment. Because one of the things with dispatch is when you move up there, you have to literally be able to flip the switch, to move from one place to another. We can't shut down for a week and move all our equipment up there and start over again. So there are a lot of, all that cost associated out of the new consoles that are in the dispatch center, the actual physical furniture that the consoles go into, some of the computer and radio equipment in the dispatch center. Trying to think what other item that would been in there. Part of it is, the rest of that has to do with the tower basically. And the construction of that, which most of it is already done and it's up there and it's pretty much ready to be wired when you move the rest of this stuff in. And Captain Pugner, is there, again, trying to, you know, put our lens through, or look at this through our lens. We're trying to figure out, is the three forty-four, four thirty-two the final number? And is it locked in?
Right, so if you, if you go in, utility is the contractor for that and they actually carry both the first, first two line items is with utility. And the contract, if you go to the fourth page, the contract shows the total sum of those first two line items together. And that's the, the contract that Captain Pugner has gotten.
Yes, the only part that you probably don't have a contract of yet, let's just back up a second. There, there's two big radio companies that do this type of stuff, utility communications and I think the other one's NORCOM it's called now. We currently use utility, however, we did price out with NORCOM as well to try to get a competitive price. Utility still beat them by a significant amount, that's why we love utility, plus it's who we're already using.
Anything in parentheses under delta came in under budget, correct?
Yes.
When you look at anything in the parentheses came in under budget?
Correct, correct.
So that was the savings from the original budget.
Right, so the first line was the budget back in force of two thousand and seventeen. Then the second column is two thousand and eighteen, the actual budget today.
So the savings was fifty-five thousand roughly?
For the two of them combined?
Not combined, no, because one of them was over by sixteen thirty-seven, so. And I'm just a, a little confused in that fight to Brian's point. I was going to see if I could figure this out as the discussion continued, but the last two numbers, or the, the last numbers in the columns?
No.
It does, delta doesn't.
Anything in parentheses is to our favor?
No, I understand, but the, the four seventeen is one point eight, the four eighteen is one point nine.
Right.
I would think it'd go the other way.
There's a difference of a hundred and forty.
Which were you talking about?
All the total. Seventeen and eighteen, the budget for two thousand and eighteen is higher.
Well, look at furniture expenditures, went up two hundred and six thousand, so that's why.
No, no, but if, if you looked at just the total, I, I didn't add it up yet, but just the totals.
Oh, no, if you look at furniture though, it's almost a two hundred thousand dollar.
The total should be wrong, I, I believe the number if you add it up, I, I believe it should be a hundred and seventy-six.
I think we're talking about three different things at one time.
Bob's talking, Bob, you're talking about the subtotals, correct, down here?
Right.
Yeah.
This is, is not the difference, this is, this is not the difference.
The, the first column is budget four seventeen.
Oh, I see.
That's two thousand and seventeen, what was budgeted for those line items?
And Josh, I'm sorry, so all those items add up to one eight?
Correct, so that was the budget that we carried in soft costs for those items.
Got it.
Budget four eighteen is actual.
And then there are more items.
And that's one point nine nine eight.
No, what, what they're saying is your twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five number in favor is incorrect because in theory, the one eight, the one million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand would have dropped to one million, eight hundred thousand.
Right.
Your new budget's one million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, so there's an error on your delta at the very end on subtotals is what, correct, Bob, that's what you're pointing at?
Yeah, a hundred and seventy-three. It's a hundred and seventy-three, zero, eight, three.
I think Ryan may have had it right, one seventy-three, zero, eighty-three.
There you go.
What is it?
One seventy-three, zero, eight.
And that's not in parentheses, correct? And that's not in parentheses, correct?
Not in parentheses.
All right.
Got it.
Thank you, Bob.
I mean, we, more importantly, we got the right number here. I just wanted to make sure we were following the...
Should we check that number to make sure that that number's, guys?
I think he is right now.
Yeah, you're going to check that to make sure because...
Just adding...
We checked all the contract numbers to make sure we were going contract.
Each of these numbers are correct and I'm very familiar with every one. But the math at the bottom was a formula that was being pulled from cells that included cells that no longer exist now.
Okay, it's the XL defense, we know.
So the subtotal, the bottom line, the new budget?
Correct.
That we are one hundred percent positive with is one million, nine hundred, ninety-eight thousand and eighty-three dollars is the number we're guaranteeing in soft costs, not to exceed. Correct? Whoever, whoever has that answer, it's simply, that is the soft cost number, that it's not going to exceed that. Steve, you have a different number?
Oh, I see you're saying the budget.
The subtotals.
Well, I don't think anything's a hundred percent guaranteed. That's why we have, well, some contingency. If we're a hundred percent guaranteed, we wouldn't be talking about a lot of this.
Well, the whole, the whole point of this meeting was to say, we will not come for money. Past the eight hun- whatever we approve.
No.
So what I'm trying to say is, is if that number's not right, what does it need to be so we don't have to go back to...
So you don't come back.
So you don't come back and say, oops?
But to say a hundred percent guarantee is inaccurate. He's very confident that this is reflection of what we went out and priced out. And we feel very confident it's going to be accurate.
And that's because we've got contracts?
Several, some of us contract, some of us quotes right now because we can't go ahead and move on a lot of this stuff because we've been told not to. With the furniture, we can't order the furniture until we get approved or owe money. So then we will have a contract. I have estimates right now, quotes right now. I have to finalize a few things with the furniture. I'm bringing lieutenant detective sergeant up there to the furniture place next week to go over some final details. Number will not increase. I'm very confident of that, that they stay a hundred percent.
So can you say, we learned about being bought out?
Yeah.
You know, contracted, whatever. Do you know what of this budget, we can say, this is a hundred percent reliable versus these are items that we cannot...
Cannot, I'm very, very confident in this number. What all I'm saying is to say a hundred percent.
Yeah, I think it's a hundred percent our belief that this is what, what the quotes have said, you know, sell us these things for.
Okay.
But we're a hundred percent con- well, we're ninety-nine percent confident that those quotes won't change. And if they do, I don't think they'll be material or significant. We'll buy one less chair then.
You're putting your debit card on that?
Yeah, we'll have a chair.
Everything except for the last three line items, all the quotes are invoices that back those up are in that packet. Just the last three line items that you see on there that we just don't, you know, we can't move forward again.
Yeah, okay.
Should we make that number two million so that you have a couple thousand?
That's up to Captain, I mean, we're good with our numbers, the prices are there.
Never mind.
I can get my chair from you there.
We can always move your old desk to the new building.
I'm just trying to point out that there could be something that's beyond my control that, you know, we're in the middle of doing the, the switch over and they find an issue with something that they...
Well, that would be on downs, they already said that. Doesn't plug in.
I don't think we're looking for...
That would be on that, not us.
A sense of, a sense of what we're talking about. Very, very confident in these numbers. Several different parts of that.
So for a desk, you'd be okay with two soft horses and a unfinished shore?
Yeah.
All right, you're ninety-nine percent confident, the number will work.
Okay, thank you. All right, so where were we? We're talking about dispatch relocations still or?
Yes.
Was there any specific questions about that? The tower's separated out from that hundred and one thousand. And then in the relocation price includes all the communications equipment, dispatch furniture, and the, there's one other thing included, oh, the microwave system. So that's part of the tower. The microwave system's going to communicate with the spring hill tower instead of using phone lines now that we're currently using. Do we have any questions?
What's the coverage going to be on your new system, they give you an estimate?
It's still based off the old system estimates, which we did in two thousand and four?
You know, the percentage is, that's probably what I was handing out, that was before my time.
You've got better location with the tower, so... They're saying that, they're saying the coverage is going to get better. About how much better, we don't know.
And the way we, the way we should think about it is, again, we've got, looks to be signed contracts, reputable, reputable firms, this number we can kind of say is locked down.
Yes.
So, and, I'm sorry, that's the relocation and the tower?
Correct, it's one contract for both, with the same company.
The only thing part of that is not contracted is the furniture. And originally, we had a price from Right Line Dispatch Furniture. Did a lot of research. Zivex is another brand that we ended up going with, the same price. A lot of departments that are using Right Line are having all kinds of issues. And a lot of departments that are using Zivex speak highly of the product, so it has a better warranty as well.
And that's, that looks to me the largest variance on the chart.
Yep, yep, and I have their quote here with me, but it's not a contract. It's, they're literally ready for us to sign as soon as we have to go ahead.
So are they committed to kind of honor that contract?
Yeah.
Until you, or to the point you signed it?
It's, it was done just recently, so there's no, the only thing we literally have to do is pick the color of the, for Micah Thompson, everything else.
Any color swatches we can look at or?
I'm going to turn into interior design.
The, just kind of continuing down the list?
So next was eight hundred thousand for architecture. So it is a contract with Chakumsky Humes, town has this contract for a long time. He's covering architectural engineering. You know, scroll through, you'll see that his contract is in here. And obviously, that contract's been signed for a long time, the price isn't changing.
So locked in, no expected changes?
No, I don't think he can change charges anymore, do you? I mean, seriously, he turns down those money.
Some of these have already been paid too, right? I'm assuming builder's risk adds town into kind of a lot of that.
Correct, yeah, I mean, obviously, we've been paying the architect monthly installments, you know, if you will.
So really, it's only the bottom three that you really haven't started because the radio tower's already started and been built, right?
Correct.
So the only variable is really the bottom three and we're pretty confident that's where we're going to be.
Just maybe one more question on the architecture fee. Have we, have we made all eight hundred thousand dollar payments?
No.
What do we have held back?
Not much left.
Not much left, but it's, it's a structured payment plan. I don't know what the, what was left on, but it's, you know, predetermined monthly, determined job processes.
Ballpark. I, I think less than that. Yeah. I thought it was about twenty, but I, you know, so... Any thought about holding that until we finish the project?
Awesome.
Independent, oh, I'm sorry, any...
I'll answer this question. Have there been, are there any contracts that are outside of the original amount of thirteen five? Are there, are there any contracts that have been made beyond thirteen million, five hundred thousand dollars?
No, we can't spend any of that.
I know you can, that's what I'm just asking, you know, it's a stupid question, but, you know, I'm just, just making sure, that's all.
It's over here.
Yeah, just, just kind of going down, I think Brian's highlighted it's really just the last three, but going down the list, is it, they're done, they're kind of paid for?
So we'll just go through it's quick, it's easy. Independent material testing, it's a local company, right, Bethel Company, they're able to get, give us the best price. They're going to charge us mileage because we're at the road. I think we're at forty-six, forty...
Forty-one something.
Forty-one thousand, and they projected how many more visits are going to need to make? Ryan, how many visits have they made so far, roughly?
Between a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty.
Testing different concrete, steel, welding, you know, all the compactions that had to be made for all the dirt that had to get excavated and refilled every twelve inches or so they come out tested to make sure it's compact and evenly compressed because you can't put the building on it. So, yeah, we're like forty-one thousand, forty thousand, so...
Last test was a couple of thousand shy.
Yeah, a couple thousand shy of that fifty thousand dollar number. But we're going to carry the whole fifty thousand to the end.
We have approximately fourteen to sixteen more visits.
Okay, that's, because we've got an email from yesterday, the twenty-fourth, saying twelve to sixteen more visits.
Right, yeah.
How much is it a visit?
Well, they're totaling, it depends on what they're doing, I think, but it's...
It does depend on what they're doing.
They're estimated five to six thousand more to finish the job.
But I contacted STL and they agreed with our estimated to complete.
Commissioning agent for HBC, it's a contractor that we chose to hire. They do a lot of the testing and guaranteeing that the system was installed correctly and that what it's functioning, it's functioning correctly in the control system. Efficiency, the performance of the units, it's a big problem in a lot of buildings. It gets overlooked and you're going to end up paying, you know, extra cost in running the equipment. It's not where to get efficiency, you know, so making sure everything's installed correctly, get back in service and work on things. They're testing the ductwork, they're doing duct glassing, make sure nobody gets in a ductwork, so...
So you can duct glass on a Michael level?
Exactly, yeah. It's like a much larger level. It's like, it's a private, you know, inspection, third-party inspection review of the HBC systems and...
And the building inspector requires that too anyway, right? Glass tests and all that.
So we're at thirty thousand build out, contract at forty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-four.
Print advertising?
I've got no clue.
Next.
What did you pay for?
It was originally carried...
The RFPs and stuff, costumes?
Well, it was originally carried as a soft cost budget, but we carried it inside of our inventory. So...
It's already spent and we're done with that.
That's correct.
So where did that come out, right, it came out of something?
That would have been part of our general conditions, which has been done, paid for. We're not going to incur any additional expense.
Does that come up in the discussion of the contingency or?
No, no. That's inside of that GMP. When you go down to the bottom, you'll have staffing, general condition, that number resides inside of general condition.
You brought, at what point are both sides going to be ready to sign to guarantee the maximum price? Because you said you, right, what I'm saying is you haven't, you haven't gotten it back yet, correct? So are we, are we ever going to sign this or are we just going to keep going on without a signed guaranteed maximum price? I mean, could someone answer what, why we haven't signed it yet?
I don't have the money.
I thought we had the money to finish the building. We would just have to not do the landscaping?
Right.
So we don't have the money to finish the building?
No, that's why we're here.
Marty, Marty, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not being flippant here. What was explained to us was, is that we could finish the building without, one of the option was, finish a building without doing, I mean, how hard would it be to just put a contingency in that pending funding from the board of finances about?
But the contract said pull them out. Right now, you're looking at a GMP, correct me if I'm wrong about that, that's three hundred thousand dollars less than what they originally gave us. That was to complete the whole building the way it was. Not the same anymore.
Part of that, that plan would be to not do a couple items and remove a hundred and seventy thousand from contingency. In which case, that would affect our GMP. That contingency resides inside of our GMP.
So what's to say when we approve the money that the GMP doesn't change?
They're going to give me, they're going to give me an amended agreement. And if the numbers add up to what it should be with the monies that we're going to get, assuming the town approves it, you approve it, the town approves it, then we'll sign it.
So the, what we've provided in the documents is the GMP with the scheduled value plus the four change orders equal the correct amount.
Yeah, I understand. My point, I just don't understand why it couldn't have been signed contingent on, oh, we agree to maintain this guaranteed maximum price pending town approval. That's all.
So, so here's, here's our problem with that. Because I, I almost kind of like where you're going.
You almost like, I don't think.
I don't entirely like it.
That's kind of like, with all due respect.
I don't, I don't, that's a plain way of telling me I'm wrong, but go ahead. So, so our, our problem from a construction perspective is if we can't get this entire project signed and we can't start that range project like quickly, then we're going to run out of time. And our staffing costs to run that project on a monthly basis is about forty-six thousand dollars a month.
Will give us a date?
May fifteenth. I think, I think we did.
May fourth.
May fourth?
Fourth, this is May fifteenth.
May fourth, we're in trouble.
I thought, I thought we just...
I'm just looking at the email that came out April sixteenth, maybe it's not the latest. Where the date was...
What is it, May fifteenth?
May fifteenth.
So that's...
What, whatever it is, I mean, to Brian's point, if it's May fifth...
Yeah, we're in big trouble.
As we're talking to the subcontractors and trying to figure out how to accelerate the firing range schedule, condense it as much as possible, I believe we can build it in eleven weeks. Our end date is July twenty-third.
So that eleven-week period will just coincide with the end date for the rest of the project?
We'd be trying to complete it all at one time, which is not optimal, but that's where we find ourselves.
But we're onsite, so we want to get it done.
Fair enough, it is kind of an important, important point. Is it May fifth or is it May fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
So if we don't have guaranteed funding by May fifteenth, it goes up forty-four thousand a month, even though you're still about six weeks out, more than six weeks out, you're going to be there for another few months no matter what.
No, no, it would go out forty-six thousand after our completion of the, of the project.
After July...
Of, of, of everything that we can build.
So when does the money need to be approved by so we don't incur extra expenses? Then when is that date, actual date?
If we, if we got the, the balance of this, if we got this contract signed by the fifteenth of May, or at least got, notice to proceed that it was approved, then we can build everything that's left on the inside of the building, plus the firing range, plus the landscaping, within the same dollar amount as is in this GMP.
What, and again, but landscaping, the stuff you were talking about landscaping and the final whatever area, I mean, that's done at the very end of the project anyway. You're not going to be landscaping. So I guess, I guess my question is, and, and I'm trying to work within your time constraint, but I also have a fiduciary responsibility to the town.
Right.
Again, I want to know, why is May fifteenth when most of it, the items on that list are at the very end?
It's all the firing range.
So the firing range will start May sixteenth if we get the funding, is what you're telling me?
Oh, we, we were scheduled to start it a month and a half ago.
The minute we get told, so it's a fire range, it's really not the building, it's the firing range, that's, that's the time.
Is if we have to stay longer to finish the firing range?
Well, if I understand it correctly, it's the firing range structure, not the inside, so it's the...
That's what needs to start by May fifteenth, that's why the money needs to be there.
You see, it's only the foundation and gravel, there's nothing more than that. There's a lot of work to do.
And just, I believe this is right, but correct me for folks who know this, but in the process, right? If, if we were to build no slack into the process, we would have a town meeting on the fourteenth of May. We need some level of day's notice before that, so reverse engineering it. We probably need to be in a real good position by end of next week.
End of four, correct.
Okay, so we don't need to nail it down, but so we know, so we know.
I think that's, I think that's how we can, we need more number, we backed it out, you know?
I see.
We determined it may fourth, you guys are gonna have to determine whether you're gonna go or don't go, or go. So it's seven days, whatever it is.
Meeting, okay. Okay, um I think we're on fiber optic.
Yeah, so it's uh exactly what it said, fiber optic, nine-one-one line, bring the nine-one-one fiber optic line into the building.
Is that just a swing and a miss? We missed it in, in the seventeenth?
That was at the ve- very beginning of the project, um the nine-one-one line that has to be running to the building, has to be there. And that's what that cost is.
That what, it just wasn't on the architectural plan?
No, it wasn't.
So that's on the, on the list?
It was on the list.
Eversource?
Bring power to the building, they charged us eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, they didn't charge us to bring gas in. I got no explanation for that. But there's a contract and a price, it's a guaranteed number, so.
And it's done, so.
We paid it a long time ago.
Yeah, so no kind of future ripple effect. Presumably, I'm sorry, we should, I should have asked that for the fiber optic, also done, right? Legal fees and bond costs, just the average?
So legal-
But the optic family.
No, I don't think they've done it.
I'm sorry, can you guys say?
I don't think the fibers have been brought into the building yet.
Yeah, but, I'm sorry, is that subject, that's the light tower, quotation?
Light tower.
That's a, is that a firm or is that just a quote?
No, it's a quote. Presently determined quote.
I'd add nothing to do with it, it's, I think it was done through you.
I think the line is there and everything, but they can't do the final connection until you're literally ready.
Buildings, so.
Then you determine it somewhere in the building and there's nothing to terminate here.
At the state contract.
So probably no real exposure, no exposure to the town, it's just when it's at the right point of completion, they come in and hook it up. Legal fees and bond, that presumably is just the standard fee for bond issuance?
Having the town independent plan review was the building department had a third-party review, uh who gave us the bill.
Again, no, no.
Didn't have a factor in.
And with no future effects, no?
No, that's done, that's what I said, everything's done, that's what related, you know, that's why we ended up adding a door or a few other things, was that independent review.
For our picture, I think we talked about telephone data system?
That's um the in-house computer system, um and use it, moving all the, doing all the wiring, all the switches for the networking for the whole building, computer, you know, terminals. Also includes the cost of relocating our server, um which houses our CAD system, our the um, records, in-car video system. We have how many servers in town?
We have one, two, three, about seven virtual servers. It's, it's one unit, but it's a, it's, they're virtual servers, but the unit has to be moved up, everything has to be brought online. There's just, it's not as easy as just rebooting a computer, so to speak.
And that includes setting up all the new and computers that we're gonna move up there as well?
We don't have any, there's no documentation, it's packaged?
I have a ton of different, it was done in so many different phases, it's gonna be bits and pieces. I have all the quotes. The company we ended up using, or hopefully gonna use to do it, is the current IT company that we use at the police station already. Um but we priced it out with different companies that were out there, different parts we priced out. Um and then the phone system's a big part of that as well. Um that includes the actual physical phones, the old desks and dispatch. Um we ended up going with a company that was, again, we got two different prices, one from what the town currently uses and one from a company that is doing the security system at the building. And the company that's doing the security system at the building had a better price, they're already gonna be there working, so we've got a good number in that as well and say some money.
And again, pretty solid.
Yes, those are solid.
Any, any risk of damage to servers, losing capacity in the exchange, things that we may have to?
We're backed up off-site every day, um onsite and off-site. So I mean, if we were to lose, I, we're probably gonna back up right before we shut everything down and move it up. And God forbid we do lose something, we'll be able to get it back. As far as hardware, short of somebody dropping something in the parking lot, it's, you know, um yeah, yeah, I guess that's possible. But no, there shouldn't be any type of, uh, any issue with stuff breaking or, or losing data because we're gonna back it up before we move stuff.
And is there any kind of like service disruption exposure?
Oh, there's gonna be.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, you're gonna have, right now, it's, if our CAD system goes down right now, we have to manually keep track of like, if a call comes in, we have to write down certain information so we can later, later on go put it back in our system. So yeah, we're probably gonna have to do that for a few hours, hopefully it's just a few hours. And we're hoping we flip the switch and nine-one-one works, but I mean, there's backups to that as well.
And is that all manual?
I'm sorry?
Is, is that all manual, so it's just people in there doing by hand what would otherwise be?
Yeah, basically, short of it is, when we hit, flip that switch, I said before for dispatch, nine-one-one and our radio's gonna work. If they need us, we'll go. We'll have to write down information to go to Fashion Way for a little while, paper and pen, till the computers get up and running, which could be, it's obviously gonna be hours, it's not something that's that simple.
There'll be a coordination with, I mean, like again, if something really were to not work when we flipped the switch, nine-one-one would roll over to the state police, to Danbury, to area departments. So I mean, it's not like somebody would call nine-one-one in town and there would be nobody on the other end. It may not, worst case scenario, it may not be us right away, till we figured it out, but there would, there would be no interruption of service, so to speak, uh we would still be able to communicate.
If, you know, if the gods were to conspire against us, is there, is there a financial exposure to the town?
No, it, it, I mean, as far as nine-one-one not working, there's a, some, some issue, I, no, there, there wouldn't be. I mean, like I said, it would roll over to another agency that would then contact us, you know, it really wouldn't be, it would be a financial issue there.
Relocation, moving expenses?
That was uh Sergeant Durkin, um got it, two or three different prices, a moving company, moving a little bit of stuff that we're gonna be moving up. And that's mostly just files, um very limited on the furniture, some desktop computers, um they finger, you know, there's different, odds and ends. Cause a lot of, most of the furniture, we're not gonna be moving up there.
Ten thousand just seems-
Hard as soon as you try to pick it up.
Ten thousand just seems low, I, I don't know why.
Well, you have to handle a substantial amount of that, right?
What's that?
On the evidence.
Of the moving expenses, because of like the, any evidence and stuff like that needs to be handled by you.
Yeah, well, our detective bureau's gonna move the evidence themselves, you're gonna, they're gonna box truck and do that themselves, because obviously we need, we need to keep, you know, continuity there as far as who's possessing it. Our range masters are gonna do the ammunition and guns. And so they're basically doing our, our records division, our files, stuff like that, we're, we're not taking any furniture, hopefully, guys.
Yeah, so a lot of the movement expenses are in the dispatch relocation. The back to the phone and data is moving expenses of the computer equipment. So we could have been categorized in moving, but it got categorized in the phone and data, moving of that stuff. So there is other moving expenses, but they're accounted for in the photos, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it's just somewhere else in this, in the breakdown. Ten thousand dollars sounds like two people in a truck and pizza.
So the pizza, we put it over.
Yeah, they're saying it's gonna be, you know, a one-day thing, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna come and help pack. But they have to pack one day and the next day they're gonna move it.
Any other questions in the walkthrough soft costs? I guess just ask the same question we asked on the hard cost. And knowing that this number's going to go out to the public with our kind of certification behind it, ninety-nine point nine percent confident that this is enough, that one nine-nine eight?
Yes, yes.
Any other, any other questions on soft costs?
I, I do, since I wasn't here when the original cost was, was approved, so the original budget of thirteen four ninety-two, um approved funding, that must have been based on a different projection than what this four seventeen budget in soft cost was? Is that, is that where, where the delta is? Because we've, we've just been talking about today, the difference, overage is a hundred and seventy-three thousand and yet we're looking at, you know, eight-hundred eighty-nine thousand. So I guess I don't realize where the delta is between the revised project total of fourteen thousand three eighty, where that approved funding? What, what, what was in that approved funding that um went over here? It's, it's not clear to me.
The HVAC, right?
We talked about the HVAC here.
Right, but that's the thing, we don't really talk.
It's everything together.
That's everything together, you have to add the soft cost plus the hard cost and that's how they come over the eighty.
Soft cost and hard cost come to fourteen, um, three eighty, correct?
Subtract it from the real, the original budget, that's why they're asking for eight hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Right, right, but we just went through the original budget and what the revised budget was, and soft cost, and that delta was one seventy-three. We just went through the change order from the GMP and that was a savings of two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. So there's still, still-
No, no, but that was on those specific items, we were still over on HBAC and plumbing.
Okay, but that's not-
And excavation, so.
That's not here.
Well, it's not broken, no, it's, it's to Brian's point, it's not broken out, right? We, we know we're over by eight-eight-eight, six-seventy-eight, we know one, we know we're one seventy-three.
We just went through the sector stories and, and we're not, we're not seeing that.
Right.
It's not adding up for me.
Right. So just doing simple subtraction, like the eight-eight-eight, six-seven-eight minus the one seventy-three, zero eighty-three, that's the overage on soft cost. There's a seven hundred and fifteen thousand five ninety-five overage somewhere in the hard cost that we don't have kind of the point of reference for.
Well, that's right, that's, I'm not seeing the whole picture.
Yeah, we just don't have what the original budget was, like if the HVAC, the original budget was one point two million, it came in at one point.
You don't understand my, my dilemma.
Right, right.
I did it for the old numbers, I don't have it for the new ones, there's.
Okay.
Yes, but, and again, I'm not blaming anyone here right now. What I'm gonna talk about briefly is just my frustration with the fact that, you know, my personal feeling is, is we moved the whole project over to completion. Firing range, equipment, so the police department can go in and, you know, use the building as the way it's meant to be. But really what you've done is, is made that impossible for us to accomplish. We can't, even if we wanted to bring it to referendum to full one point five million, we have till May fifteenth is our cutoff. And if that fails, we don't have time to approve the eight hundred and eighty-nine after that, because we're gonna incur forty-four thousand. So I don't know who's at fault for that, and I guess we'll find out at some point, but it's just frustrating to me, because here's a project that should be done the right way. And it's not gonna be done the right way, and we're gonna risk that the firing range doesn't get completed down the road. Because that could happen, cause we've seen it happen in other projects that have been left unfinished or five years down the road, it gets un, it gets finished then. So for me, it's just incredibly frustrating that we didn't have this conversation two months ago and made plans to get this money approved. So the police department isn't in limbo, weathering, you know, do we need to make arrangements to go to Worcester Mountain? Is Worcester Mountain available to us? Is this available to us? Now they're just kinda left out there, really not knowing what their future is in terms of the firearms program and other training requirements. So I would just hope in the future, if I'm still on the board or any of the members are still on the board, this doesn't happen again. And I'm not talking about overages, I get it, you know, it happens. But to be so irresponsible is to come, we're having a meeting on May twenty, on April twenty-fifth, twenty days prior to D-Day that the money has to be there. And, and it's just, it's just frustrating to me and it's upsetting and it's a disservice to the police department.
I just wanna echo his point, and again, this is not even about, I mean, you, you can't blame an individual, but because I have requested all these emails, this is going back in January, there were meetings going on with Mr. Manfreda, Nickerbacher, John Menti, I have that, you were making-
When?
Yes, I have.
When?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll look for it, but I will, I will.
Cause it wasn't until late March.
Okay, well, I, I do have them, there was a communication about getting together, but here's my big problem, is that it's a transparency issue. And one thing is that if we had, if we had known this earlier, it could have impacted a lot of things. It could have impacted the school renovations, because this was known before that happened. It could have, uh, we could have planned our budget differently, I mean, you have to say that you knew before we did.
No, that's not true.
Okay, well, I'm-
Well, fair, I mean, there's been rumors for two years, we all had an idea.
Yeah, we all knew, something.
I mean, no one did it, it's not like surprise, like I'm not gonna sit here and sat in here rumors that they were over budget, we were just kinda waiting to see where the numbers fell, I mean.
But, but one thing that's making me very uncomfortable is that no one is taking the reins, no one is taking this like chart. And I'm absolutely astounded at the silence of the first amendment, I really am. That's something that's important for me if I'm moving forward. I, I agree with Brian that we should put the whole project out to referendum, but that's gonna be an issue. So I, I need accountability for me to feel comfortable about, you know, getting another million dollars. And I don't see that anyone is really taking this, owning it, I don't see it. And I, I have to be honest, cause I'm not a politician, I just say it, so I don't see it.
You know, there's, I think there's lots of frustration to be shared. I just wanna kinda be clear on one point. I take it you all think we are doing this the right, right way. Maybe the way we got here isn't perfect, but from here on out, we're gonna solve this problem in a way that you all think is going to give us a high-quality building. So again, maybe it didn't come about the right way, but we're not gonna end up with a shoddy building, right? Where you all believe we're gonna end up with a Class A.
Building was very impressive, you know, we've offered tours and I see people.
Oh, wow, it's impressive, absolutely.
No question when it comes to the quality of that building.
I think you saw what the difference was, it's, if we don't get the money, it's really, it's furnishing, landscaping, and basically the shell for the firing range, it's all you lose. The quality of the building is the quality of the building.
But I mean, the furniture is very important, I mean, ergonomically, these people need to be-
Well, I agree, but-
I'm just saying, I just don't wanna minimize in fact that, that proper furniture, I mean, that all goes into this. I mean, they need stuff that's, you know, gonna, and he has, my question, Bob, are we planning on voting on this tonight or are you calling another meeting? How's that gonna go?
Well, let's, let's finish contingencies discussion and then we'll see where, where folks are.
Well, before we do, cause Hope, could, could you think about it and just say like, what if someone had concerns? Who would be the point person they would single out to say, hey, what's going on? If, if you could just think about that while we're talking about contingencies.
We function as a team, that's right.
Okay, and so we would call on you.
We're not sitting here saying it wasn't our fault.
No, and I'm not asking you to say that, not asking you to say that.
The money, the planning, all the effort that went into it, the constant looking for reductions is always there, you know, and, you know, I think the general feeling was, is when we finally do have to come and say we need money, we knew exactly how much money we need. how much money we needed, and it wasn't iffy. Six months ago, if we had this meeting six months ago, and Mr. Manfred said, are you ninety-nine point nine percent sure, we'd be going?
But, but to be fair, according to our attorney, who I trust, says the reason why he didn't sign the guaranteed maximum price was because he already knew there wasn't enough money to do it. So, again, and again, I'm not trying to, I respect you a hundred percent.
I understand.
What I'm saying is, is we should've, we should've had this meeting a month and a half ago, two months ago, and we probably could've gotten to the same place as we're getting right now. That's, that's my only point, and it was not to pick on-
We would've been a little bit looser, but we would've had to-
Little bit looser, but we probably could've been pretty, same issue.
That's basically what I was saying.
Okay, contingencies. We've touched on it, I am, I guess maybe gonna start it off by, again, when I look at the, the summary letter from April sixteenth, we know that there's the thirteen thousand remobilization charges for getting the structure, for subcontractors, subcontractors back, and it's like, can you just tell us where the contingency started, what's against it, and where do we end up?
So the, the original budget was four hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. Today, we have a hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and eighteen. We have a pending amount-
Well, a hundred and eighty-three charged against-
That's correct.
One eighty-three, five eighteen.
Okay, you started at four thirty-five, we've charged a hundred and eighty-three.
We also know about-
And I'm sorry, Ron, what's the, what's in that one eighty-three, five eighteen?
So two of the major items in the one eighty-three, or ninety thousand of it was the unsuitable materials that we talked about, the firing range. There was a fifty-seven thousand dollar for the fabric that we had talked about on the front of the building. And then after that, I mean, we can go through item by item if you'd like, some are fairly minimal.
That's one, that's one forty-seven, is there another, what's the next biggest item?
We'll go with the truss modifications for eleven, eleven thousand six hundred.
Sorry, truck modification?
Truss.
Oh, truss, okay.
And that was because of the metal that you had talked about earlier?
You guys talked about this tonight.
Okay.
This is the, the venue.
And there was one for sixty-six hundred, for three inch insulation at the exterior foundation. It wasn't originally shown in the drawings, we purchased the contract for site concrete and steel, it was gonna be with the site work contractor, didn't show in the drawings, we received a revised set of drawings, and there was, so, a design change.
So unsuitable materials, bad luck.
Well, the truss modification, who required that? I mean, why, why did it have to get modified?
So, the, the truss needed, trusses needed to be modified to accept the HVAC system. Between the point, uh, when we needed to be into fabrication with the trusses, and when we brought the MEP guys, our MEP coordinators on board, it was approximately a one week We went into fabrication with the trusses, knowing that maintaining the schedule would be more important than the possible modifications we would have to make down the road. It ended up being that we needed to make modifications for eleven thousand dollars. Instead of waiting, holding off, coordinating with the MEP subcontractors, and we'd probably be four more weeks down the road, four weeks added on to this.
Was that one of, did you go over that with the building committee prior to making the decision to go ahead or not?
We did have a discussion with the building committee about the releasing of the MEP team and the drywall subcontractor who provided it. But once it was installed, once the coordinators were trying to do the coordinated drawing set, that's when it was realized that we would have needed modifications in order to get around hoopla and elevator areas. At that point, it was profitable.
Some of these items come up during the, on the field, and, you know.
Well, yes and no, I mean, they come up if you don't have a design, and I understand the timeframe, but I think if they had the HVAC designed, that probably would have been an issue. Is that fair to say?
Again, again, I'm not pointing fingers, I, I just, I just want facts, I don't want, so we went eleven thousand over because of the trusses and whatnot.
We typically set aside a contingency that is used for the coordination of subcontractors, maintaining the schedule, oversights in, buyout, and estimate, and that's what it, that's what it's used for, and to find out. In this case, it would be a coordination between subcontractors.
Okay, so we started at the four thirty-five, nine twenty-one, one eighty-three, five eighteen, is two fifty-two, four oh three?
That's correct. And we have approximately forty-two thousand pending.
Pending?
Pending, yes. That does not include the thirteen thousand that you just pointed out.
What are the forty-two thousand?
The forty-two thousand is for address alarm, wireless access points to the building, and ladder racks, which were originally carried on the soft cost side, but it wouldn't make sense to do it that way, or it would make more sense to have it on the electrician's side, have him install the ladder racks with his installation.
So it's really fifty-five thousand, right, is what you kind of have pending against contingency?
Uh, forty-two, uh-
What about the thirty thousand?
Yeah, thirty, yeah.
So it's fifty-five thousand is what we really have pending, that we know of right now, barring something unforeseen, like, so really, we have about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand in contingency, is that the number?
That's correct.
About two hundred thousand.
Is there anything else that you could think of that we're gonna have to draw on that?
So in reflection on some of those, uh, dress alarm is something we feel that the cops definitely need, it's a panic button, maybe, that's right, the, the wireless-
The news channel?
No, I think Brian probably does, it's a panic button for the-
Just if you have an emergency, hit it, and it goes through to PD, sure, every, every police department.
Sure. The, the wireless access points, I think it's up to bid, when it came in at twenty-seven thousand five hundred, and we're getting other bids to get that number down, so it's pending, because we're not approving it, because we're currently still getting entertaining other bids, and some of them have come in substantially lower.
Yeah, forty, the forty-two thousand is the max price. We are working on getting that twenty-seven thousand dollar number lower, and I'm fairly confident that we can get significantly lower.
But for our numbers tonight, we're just gonna go with one ninety-seven, because it's a great surprise if we're at two ten, and we're like, wow, that was a great bet.
Worst case scenario, that's what we're doing.
One ninety-seven. Pending, nothing, well, if we have eight inches of rain, and you have a huge washout, and the excavator has to come back and do work, you would, I'm assuming, draw that from contingency, or some force of nature that we're not considering, I mean, there is the possibility that this contingency, what I'm saying is one ninety-seven is not money in the bank, a lot of things could happen over the next few months, that could take that money away from us.
But we're getting so close to completing this project, the risk is going down as well.
I agree.
It's, I mean, they're painting, the basement walls are painted, ceilings are going in, it's, you're wrapping up.
It's a good thing if we have it, but I think we have to go forward, just saying it's not there, and if we get it, luckily, you know, we're, we're fortunate that we get that back.
So we could get that, you know, who knows how much we left, but we could get that back from the eighty-three, thirty-eighty-eight we're asking for.
In, in the thirty percent that's not finished, roughly thirty percent, what's the high risk area in that thirty percent?
I mean, I, I think it's probably always the ME of the systems, the commission, I mean, finishes are pretty easy to control, I mean, if you're starting the project, I would tell you it's always site work, you know, that's one thing we focus on, is get out of the ground as fast as you can, because there's a lot of questions.
And is the risk diversified, in other words, is it across a number of small executions, or are there some big executions?
So you're talking about in terms of cost?
Yeah, no, the thirty percent, just a simple example.
You know, with, with the subcontractors that are in place, with where they are on this job, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't classify it as the risky part of the job, because we're really kind of, you know, the risky part of the job, I would tell you, is, is just getting everybody on the same plane and, and finishing. I, I, I have said it at, at the building committee meetings, to be very, very candid, I need the project management staff on this project to stop doing spreadsheets, and then doing basic project management, we need to, we really need to get off of this and get on to building the job, and, and I say that very sincerely.
So I, I think what you're telling us is, in the thirty percent that's to be completed, there's not kind of one area of higher risk, that if we had a bad day, it could eat into the one ninety-seven significant, we'd have to be, we'd have to be unlucky on a number of smaller aspects of the project.
Yeah.
Again, that's a diversified risk.
Definitely a lot of different little categories.
Unless, so we had, like, a fire, I'm sure we have-
Builders, builders' risk.
So, and you don't have a deductible where we're covering the first however much of it. Like, my builder risk policy, I have to eat five thousand, my projects are like this compared to you.
We didn't provide the builder's risk.
So do you know what our deductible is on things like that, if there are?
I, I think it's fine.
Five thousand?
I, I think so.
It cost eight thousand, I think the premium, wasn't it, eight thousand to get that?
Yeah, but there's your deductible on the loss.
No, I know, I just, maybe it, Paul was just gonna have that.
Yeah, it was eight thousand, eight hundred ninety, which is a pretty good front.
So the, the contingencies that we, the contingency fee that we think we have now, roughly two hundred, one ninety-seven, four oh three, and that's on the hard cost side.
Yes.
So I take it what you're telling us is that with, based on your expertise, know what's left, you are about as confident as a human can be, knowing that there are risks all around us, that the twelve million, three eighty-two, five ninety-five is a sufficient hard cost total to build out that project as it was initially scoped.
As it is drawn on the current plans and specs.
Right, no, so maybe to bring it home-
Including all the changes and-
The value and-
Yep, and the firing range structure.
We're, we're very, very confident that we have accounted for everything that goes into that building, and that's why we want to guarantee the number.
The, the two hundred at this point in a project, is that on, again, based on your experience and your expertise, is that on the high end, the low end, middle, appropriate, stay, keep loose sleep at night over it, rest easy?
Rest easy. I think, you know, we're-
Don't sleep over anything.
You know, we're here at the, you know, the end of April, I would tell you that by the middle, beginning, the middle of June, we probably would be comfortable giving some of that back to the town, assuming it's not spent. I mean, if, if we're sitting here the first week in June, and we still had a two hundred thousand dollar contingency, we wouldn't have a problem reducing that by a hundred in another month.
And what percentage of completion will you be at, at the end of May, beginning of June?
So is that even on?
Yeah.
What's the building, it's, 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 is that, is that even on?
June first as a stake in the ground for the eighty-one percent, June first?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I can ask the question any more different ways.
I disagree, I have to assume the money's not there, and if we did-
Yeah, of, of course.
I mean, good for, I mean, that's, I don't wanna say good for us, because we're still over six hundred something thousand, but I mean, you know, if it's there, it's there. I mean, you know, if it's not, if something bad happened that was outside of our control at this point.
Well, that's, that's our objective, we're doing, are we with high confidence that with a project in this state of completion, knowing what has to be done to get to full completion, a roughly two hundred thousand dollar contingency, confident that we're not gonna go back to the BFFO taxpayer asking for another penny? I said everyone's got nodding.
We are.
Well, the scariest part of the job is obviously getting out of the ground. We had four hundred and thirty-five to begin with, we have two hundred thousand left, and we have seventy percent of the job coming. The scary part's over, and we have approximately a little bit less than that.
We are gonna go to the voter again, unfortunately, though, based on the timeframe, you know, that we're gonna, when we decide it's appropriate to finish-
Yeah, to build out the gun range.
To, to finish the gun range, we're gonna have to go back to the voter. So I don't wanna just, you know, again, it's just, we're gonna go to the voter two times, conceivably, I mean, you know, because of our time constraints, where, I, I still feel that the voters would pass the one point three, whatever's required to finish the PD properly, I do believe that most, I, I think.
I think they would've passed it in the capital plan, honestly.
I, I disagree with you, Paul, I understand you disagree.
We don't have the time.
Yeah, I know, I've said that, I mean, unfortunately, we don't have the time.
He also thought it was gonna pass the first referendum, but it didn't.
I thought that.
Do you also, uh, do you think that?
I don't remember, I don't remember.
But we also are hearing that perhaps outfitting the shooting range isn't necessarily gonna cost what we thought it was gonna cost, and we may eventually have two hundred thousand dollars to put towards that, so if we funded this at one point five right now, we may be overfunding what needs to be done.
That's a, a thought, sorry, too.
I agree. I think there's some cost in this.
Any more questions? I guess if not, I'd suggest we entertain a motion to approve funding of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand six seventy-eight to go to the Board of Selectmen for scheduling of a-
Special town meeting.
Special town meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna say aye, aye, I specifically, I'm aye.
Oh, you, you're on the, yes.
I'm aye, aye, nay.
All right, so it is a unanimous six, zero. I believe we have no more business in front of us this evening. We wanted to just thank the folks, our, our experts for coming tonight, very helpful. Really appreciate you going through this in duckies and horsies, where my bad, these are all, they probably already got, so thank you very much. So with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done.